I'm Jeremy Hooper. I'll be chairing today's meeting. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call to order the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for July 7th, 2022. I will point out that we have seven board members in attendance, eight, including myself, and that constitutes a quorum, so we can do business. I'll ask that we go ahead and introduce ourselves, beginning on our left.
Matt Jones.
Julian Latham.
David Alzamora.
Jack Farrell.
Philip Shoemaker.
Sonia Rothstein.
Paul Roberts.
And with excused absence tonight, we have Luis Macuro, and we're also missing our very own Alex Cameron, but we do have Darren Burridge, who will be presenting for the village tonight. I would like to remind everybody, please speak directly into the microphone, as we are being video and audio recorded, as well as any attendance. We do have a sign-up sheet in the back. If you would like to speak, please do so now. And also remember to speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thanks. We'll be following the agenda directly, and the first agenda item is approval of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2022 meeting. Does anybody have any amendments or corrections? Hearing done. Does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes from June 2nd, 2022?
Second.
Motion made by Sonia Rothstein, second by David Almazora. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. The minutes from the June 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board Meeting is approved as written. So the second agenda item that we have is a public hearing for a conditional district rezoning for the Village of Pinehurst. Can I have a motion to enter into a public hearing, please?
Make a motion to move into the public hearing?
Second. We have a motion by David Almazora, and a second by Sonia Rothstein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. We are now in the public hearing for this conditional district rezoning for the Village of Pinehurst. I'll turn the meeting over to Darren.
Thank you.
Darren, all yours.
Thank you. First, I apologize for Alex not being here. He can't be here tonight. You're going to regret me, of course, because I take a long time to get through everything, but I will try and be shorter. So, public hearing number one, zoning map amendment request from RD, Recreational Development District, to HCD, Hotel Conditional District, for a portion of PID number 00025800. This is about plus or minus 6.85 acres. The property owner is Resorts of Pinehurst Incorporated, and the applicant is Bob Kuntz with Kuntz Jones Design. Currently, the zoning and land use classification is RD, Recreational Development, which is privately owned surface parking, and the use is privately owned surface parking to accommodate recreational facilities, golfing, tennis pool complex, et cetera, and clubhouse. The proposed zoning and land use would be Hotel Conditional District, which, as you recall, we previously did this late last year, or sometime last year, when we moved the zoning from RD to Hotel Conditional, to allow for construction of a lodge. And this is, the request before you is because the previous request didn't take in the entire parking lot, because I don't think at the time there was a thought that they were put in a parking structure. So what they're doing right now is requesting to extend that Hotel Conditional District to allow for the addition of a two-level parking structure, and request to reserve uses associated with the previous conditional zoning approval for the lodge at Pinehurst Resorts. And you'll see that as Condition 12, as we get into it. This public hearing was noticed in accordance with North Carolina general statutes and our PDO. So a conditional zoning map amendment is a legislative decision in process which requires a public hearing. That's why we're here tonight. Applicant may propose, and the local government may consider specific conditions related to the specific project. Conditions must be mutually agreed upon and reasonably related to the proposal. This public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Board on the proposal, and will forward a recommendation to the village council once you come to a conclusion. We also shall consider the currently adopted comprehensive plan after seeking input from the public. The request, specifically a conditional zoning map amendment for a portion of the subject property to Hotel Conditional District. This includes development of a two-level, partially subterranean parking structure. The proposal would help address parking needs and still maintain the uses with the previous lodge rezoning approval. Again, that's that new condition that's being proposed. The area is located off of Carolina Vista Drive and borders the railroad along NC-5 to the west. Here is the requested condition. In addition to the other conditions that remain in effect, this affects the uses. And the requested condition specifically is to allow previously approved uses and conditions will be maintained within the general building envelope, which we, that former building envelope that was where the lodge was approved. Design standards will be maintained for the structures within the building envelope indicated. Any modification to the structures will be required to obtain a COA from the Village of Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission. Modifications to the overall open space may not be reduced by more than 15%. Impervious surface may not be increased by more than 15%. Any increase in impervious surface will be managed per condition number five. So here it is, adjacent land uses and zoning. If you go to the north, which would be generally this way, of course, you have the adjacent property, which is now the USGA Golf House, which is under construction. Across the right-of-way, Cherokee or Two, or Cherokee, there's some single-family houses or single-family residential. There's village-owned recreation and parks. There's the Sand Hills Women's Exchange, and there's an office and bank type use. You have zonings up there, VMU, CD, R10, R20, RD, and OP. To the south, east, and west is really all pretty much just Pinehurst Resort property. The current comprehensive plan land use designation is private open space. So the adjacent land use and zoning, you can see there's a number of adjacent land uses and zoning. This is the rezoning area in question, from RD to HCD. This is the area that was previously approved for the conditional zone change to allow the lodge's construction. To the west is some area that's zoned OP, Office Professional, which is used by the, currently used by the resort for offices. There's also some parking that's along the railroad siding here to the north. This is another recent zone change to Village Mixed Use CD, a conditional district that allowed the USGA project to move forward. And then if you look here, look to the east, where the main clubhouse property is, along with the pool and tennis courts and all that, that is zoned RD. Comprehensive plan, when the planning and zoning board and council is considering a zoning change, they have to take into account the most recent comprehensive plan, which for us is the 2019 comprehensive plan, and it's either consistent or inconsistent with the plan. In this case, we identified guiding principle number five, taking care of business. The village should support the golf tourism and healthcare industries that make up the economic backbone of the community. Golf and tourism are two of the most important industries in Pinehurst in terms of employment, land use, and reputation. It is important to support the resort and other businesses that cater to these industries in order to maintain Pinehurst's identity as a premier golf and hospitality destination. And the existing land use designation on the conservation and growth map would not be altered, and it stays consistent with the private open space designation. These are just the existing conditions in the plan set. The existing condition really for this particular area, the vast majority of that area is used currently for, is currently the main parking lot that services the campus. Here is, and the applicant and his representative is going to get a little bit more in-depth with this, with their presentation, so I'll do kind of a basic overview, but this is the basic general concept plan. So what they're showing is the construction of a two-level proposed parking terrace structure. So it would be placed over the main, you know, portion of that main parking lot, and be placed in two sections. There'll be, you can enter from kind of the main parking area. You could actually go up to the parking lot. This would be a ramp going up, and then on the top level here. This is the building envelope, that main building envelope, that they're asking to retain and preserve those previous uses to no greater intensity than, no greater intensity that was previously approved. Here's the general circulation plan. This just kind of shows how the various pattern, vehicles, golf carts, and such, emergency can access and go through the site. Parking terrace renderings. Applicant has provided elevation and renderings with the submission material for the parking terrace. Due to being located in the local historic preservation district, a COA will also be required, and there have been COAs for this project before. The lodge had received its COA, the USGA had received its COA, and so on. The lower level of the structure is shown to have a proposed finished floor elevation of approximately 510 feet, while the second floor level will have a finished elevation of approximately 524 feet, which is about at level, as you get up towards the top, I think it's almost, that level is almost the existing ground level. The proposed brick parapet wall along the perimeter will add another plus-minus three feet to the total height. So here are various renderings, looking at this potential parking structure. As you can see, this is looking to the south. You're coming up, coming through the lips down here. This is, I believe, the main, that main driveway that goes into the existing parking lot that would feed into this. And this, you can see how it's coming out of the ground down here, and basically gets back to grade as you get to the south. The other is, this rendering is just kind of the opposite way, looking to the north and a little bit to the west. You can see there's a walkout from below down here. You can see they're trying to preserve this area for emergency. The reason why this is in here is for emergency vehicle purposes, things like that. Just another couple of renderings of the site, and you can see this walkout here on the right. This is that walkout that's right over here, that people can walk from the lower part of the structure up. Environmental impacts, there's no floodplains or wetlands that are involved with the project. It's located within the WS2 watershed, and SIA was previously approved, and best management practices for stormwater must be implemented. There's an active RCW partition near the development site. We do have that letter. There's no impacts for red-coated woodpecker habitat, per the biological assessment provided by the applicant, as with your materials. Site features, you can access remaining as-is, really down the traffic circle at Cherokee Road and down Carolina Vista Drive. Pedestrian connectivity provided with private sidewalks, the existing system on the site. All signage will follow the approved condition number three. All landscaping will be required to meet PDO requirements, with internal landscaping to be provided for separation and screening. Applicant has indicated that plantings will follow Manning's recommendations in the village's planting guide. All exterior lighting will meet PDO requirements. Stormwater management is proposed as an underground system, as indicated on the GCP. Best management practices will be required if the project is approved. Public water and sewer available and will be provided by the Moore County Public Utilities. Parking. So, the applicant is before you, because one of the conditions, when we started talking about the lodge rezoning last year, was there was a preference that, you know, there's two things that are going at a time. Do they take out the tennis courts for additional surface parking, or do they do some type of structured parking? And I think that the village, the council at the time, had added a portion to the good condition stating that they would prefer a leveled parking structure. That's what they're going for at this time, so what, right now, as proposed, there would be a net gain of approximately 123 spaces to be provided with this project. Now, it's a net gain at this point until such time as, you know, they start building in that envelope where the lodge is. So what will happen is, as they come forward with uses in that lodge, we're going to look at the parking requirement for that, and that will diminish that surplus as those things come in line. The lower level is indicated to have 156 spaces, and the upper level having 148 spaces. Previously approved condition number eight of the ordinance 2107 required the applicant to provide 125 additional standard-sized spaces on the main campus, and that the number will be adjusted for any changes to the buildings on the previously approved concept plan. And what was happening at that time was, we were looking at a general concept plan. So we knew that, the applicant knew that there might be changes to the amount of parking spaces required, and in particular, if they started to back off, or if they started to require more spaces, we would require more spaces as part of that, or they could reduce that level of spaces required as part of that. The 125 spaces requirement was partially based on the PDO's required parking for uses and density with the proposed lodge facility. That was what we were looking at at the time. I think there was some bonus that was built into that. There was just some buffer, so it was over and above what the PDO required, but that's where we ended up landing on, is 125 spaces. Planning and zoning board action, conduct a public hearing and review the material along with a staff recommendation. After holding the public hearing, the board should take one of the following actions. Recommend approval of the proposed conditional rezoning with stated specific conditions, and adopt a statement of consistency with the 2019 comprehensive plan. Recommend denial of the proposed conditional rezoning with stated specific conditions, and adopt a statement of consistency with the 2019 comprehensive plan. If additional information is needed or items are not fully addressed tonight, the board can continue the public hearing. If the hearing is continued, the specific date, time, and location must be announced. So staff recommendation. The applicant has requested a condition to permit or preserve the previously approved uses within the lodge's approved footprint, which i.e. is, there was a lot of lodging use, there's a bar, there's a locker room, there might have been some meeting space, at the same or less, and this is key, at the same or lesser intensity, square footage, number of units, et cetera, chairs, seats, that kind of thing. Any changes that are greater in intensity or land use would require another amendment, rezoning, and we'd go through, back through the same process. The applicant indicates that the reason for the request is that the future development has not yet been determined on that lodge placement and footprint. For example, it is thought there remains a strong desire to construct a locker room facility as part of its commitment to the USGA, but plans have not yet been fully developed. The proposed condition would allow for that as long as it does not exceed the previously approved square footage, the number of units, or the intensity. The resort may also want to construct a bar, tavern, pub facility, and the condition once again would permit that at the same intensity, area, number of seats, et cetera. The same principles would apply to the lodging use in terms of units and bedrooms. As staff had pointed out in the staff report, staff is somewhat concerned with not having a better conceptualized site plan elevations and rendering of the future uses within the lodge footprint area, and would recommend that the applicant provide additional conceptual plans for consideration as part of this zoning map amendment, and be included as part of the general concept plan. Staff has no issues with the proposed parking terrace and the conceptual plan for the structure. Staff is also comfortable that the HPC will also be required to review and issue major COAs for future construction. And with that, I'm done.
Darren, thank you.
So, you can, we can either go into questions now, or you can have the applicant do a presentation.
I think what we'll do is go ahead and welcome up the applicant.
Okay, I just wanted two questions for Darren.
Please, go ahead.
That may save some time. Two questions, clarifying item number 12. Not so much the first part that talks about keeping the intensity and uses within the lodge, but the question in the last two paragraphs about the impervious surface and the, particularly the open space.
Open space.
Can you explain the implications of that, or what's new, or why we should be understanding that?
I'm going to defer that to the applicant for a better explanation, that we'll get a little bit more in-depth on that than I can.
Okay. The second question is, can you clarify the acreage a little bit? I mean, it's confusing to me a little bit here. There were 6.85 acres, is that what?
Yes.
And there's another rezone of 2.68 acres. Is that the size of the deck, or, I'm very confused with those two acreage numbers.
Yeah, let me, let me look into that, Jack, and figure that out while you're, give me, give me a minute to figure that out.
Put that on your to-do list, thank you.
Yep. Because that has come up before, and I just need to clarify that, you're right.
While he's doing that, do we have any other questions for staff? Any other questions for staff at this point?
Not yet, but later.
All right, so let's go ahead and welcome up Bob and Darren.
Yep.
If you find that answer before they begin, but...
I'll find it.
Hey, Bob, go ahead and come on up, if you would, welcome. Please, introduce yourself and any of your team that'll be speaking.
Our good friend, the applicant, might be able to straighten me out real quick on that.
The total area with the parking lot and the parking structure?
And the parking structure is 6.85 acres. So that's the 2.86 plus the additional acreage. I believe that's...
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
So, the area of the original HCD plus the additional acreage that we're asking to be rezoned today is 6.85 acres.
So, the lodge footprint plus the area which may be consumed by the parking deck is a total of 6.85 acres?
Eight-five.
And that does not include the lower parking lot, is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, no, I'm sorry. It does include the entire area that you see in red. I'll show it in my presentation.
Okay, because it's a little confusing to me.
Yeah, it's the entire area that's being requested to be part of the HCD.
Oh, that wasn't clear, okay.
Yeah, I can understand that, Jack.
Yep.
Because as we've talked through, it gets more confusing to me, so let me...
So it would be like a rezoning of the delta, not an entire rezoning.
Yeah, they're only rezoning, they're only rezoning the portion that's not currently zoned HCD that was previously done. So they're adding that to the north, which adds more of that parking lot into it.
So four is...
So the 2.65 acres is the original lodge footprint, so to speak, and that's not being rezoned, obviously, because it's already zoned.
Correct. That's correct. So it's a net increase of four point some acres.
Four points, yeah.
We could have been clearer, we could have been clearer on that. I'll take, I'll take the hit on that.
I understand that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Thank you. If you'd like me to, I can go ahead and address the intensity question as well, the request in condition 12 for the added impervious surface and the open space reduction. The reason we're asking for that is because it's very, very set and clear in the conditional district standards. Any modifications to impervious surface that would go up, or any reductions in open space, there's no flexibility in the code at all in a conditional district. So whatever number we commit to is what number that is for open space and impervious surface. So in this case, if, you know, if the impervious surface, if something expanded by 10 feet, technically, we would have to come back in and go through a concept plan again.
Clearly, this will vary that to some extent, and you're just giving yourself that option.
Just giving a little bit of flexibility. And the special intensity allocation was granted for the entirety of the property, so from an impervious surface standpoint, and since it's all included in the 69-acre tract, the open space really, a small modification to open space really wouldn't make that much difference.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Well, let's go ahead and move forward. Bob, welcome again. Thanks for stepping right up into some questions. We appreciate that.
Sure.
Please go ahead and introduce your team members who may be speaking, and go ahead and start.
Actually, Dick Hickemotham with Pinehurst Resort would like to open, and then turn it back over to me for the presentation.
Great, thanks.
And Darren, could you get the parking terrace presentation?
Sorry.
That's the other one.
This one?
Yeah, that one. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. Are you ready, Darren? Okay. My name's Dick Hickemotham, I'm CFO for Pinehurst Resort. I enjoyed reading the staff's report on the project. It made some of my reporting seem almost stimulating, and I'm an accountant, so Darren, sorry. And I'd also like to say hi to Alex. My understanding is, he is listening today, so I hope, Alex, you're feeling better. I will let the professional staff do most of the heavy lifting here, but I wanted to say a few words about the project we are reviewing. First and foremost, we are here because of condition number eight of the lodge's conditional zoning, which was approved almost one year ago this month. In condition number eight, the village asked us to consider structured parking to accomplish the goal of adding 125 full-size spaces to the PCC campus. Understand that from a business standpoint, structured parking is the most costly solution, and it is the hardest one to implement on this site. However, based on council's request, general support from our neighbors, and with ownership's blessing, Pinehurst has agreed to move forward with proposing a structured parking solution. However, we do have some caveats that we believe are both fair and reasonable. One, construction of the project must begin on or about December 1, 2022, which means approval from P&amp;Z and council must occur fairly quickly to allow full review by village staff prior to start construction. The reasons for this requirement are simple. A, we need construction access through the USGA site prior than completing their construction. Otherwise, all construction traffic for the parking deck would have to access the site through Carolina Vista, a visual none of our residents or members would want to consider. Two, based on estimated construction timelines, this would allow access to most of the parking by May of 2023, thus avoiding parking Armageddon in the busiest drive-in seasons for the resort. Secondly, Pinehurst must protect the approved uses in the original conditioned zoning, either in the form of a lodge or in a lower-density solution that will be presented here in a few minutes. I normally stop short of words like absolute and addressing projects, just like the lodge. However, these two caveats are as close to absolutes for Pinehurst Resort as I can imagine. And as I noted previously, we do not believe either is unreasonable in terms of the spirit of our original agreement. Lastly, I will point out, if approved, and if both the parking terrace and Barrett Road come to fruition, Pinehurst will have invested over $10 million to add more than 400 spaces, improve another 300 spaces, and add a new entrance to the harness track, all in the last two years. This represents a major commitment to the community, especially since, as we have said before, we are not the only ones responsible for parking. Thank you for your time tonight and your service to the village, we certainly do appreciate it.
Bob?
Thank you, Dick, and thank you, members of the board. It's good to be here tonight, again, about a year later. Before I get started, I'd also like to introduce Jay Hugo from Three North. Jay is the architect that's putting together the parking structure, and he's here tonight and can answer any questions. I'd also like to introduce Tim Carpenter with LKC Engineering. Tim is civil engineer and working through all of the stormwater management, BMPs, waterline lines, sewer lines, et cetera, and working with the fire marshal in the process. So, and we have had multiple TRC meetings with staff as we've gone through this process and been working with them to get something that we can agree can work at the end of the day for a parking terrace. So I'd like to go ahead and start. Darren did a good job of explaining the project, and I would like to just hit a couple of details. So looking at the existing clubhouse and the existing site, you can see the parking lot coming in, the main parking lot area, and the access, I'm not sure, you guys probably can't see my pointer, but I'm looking at the area coming in Carolina Vista and turning into the main parking lot here. That's an important spot in part of what we're discussing, because the parking terrace and the parking structure is really located in this area of the parking lot, and that access drive and this entire configuration will remain the same in this main entry drive. So you can see the croquet lawns, the clubhouse, and the Carolina Vista drop-off loop. As Darren mentioned, this is the existing hotel conditional district that was originally approved back about a year ago, and you can see where that location is. Again, we're here tonight because the parking structure is not permitted in the RD district. It is permitted in a hotel district, but it's not permitted technically in an RD district. So in order to meet condition number eight, we have to come back in and request a zoning to a district that allows for parking structures. This is the proposed zoning, and Jack, yes, it does, that 6.85 acres is this entire area, and it does, and that is the 6.85 acres in the entirety of that area. So it will be, what we're asking for tonight is to have that additional acreage added to it. Back when we were working with the council in defining the conditions related to parking and those 125 parking spaces on the campus, the agreement was that those 125 spaces would be located somewhere on the main campus, so within the con... So, within the confines of Highway 5, Zalea Road, and Cherokee and inside this campus area in some location. So, there were two proposals essentially at that point in time with surface parking located on the tennis courts to the north behind the swimming pool or a parking structure in parking terrace located within the main parking lot. So, those were the two options that were presented. Town council, in their conditions, said that they would prefer, in condition number eight, that they would prefer the parking structure and some type of deck structure to be located in the main parking lot versus the 125 spaces being located on the tennis courts. So, looking at general existing conditions, as I mentioned, actually, there are some utilities that come across the property here. But in general, this is the parking area. This is that access drive coming through and then connecting back. The proposed plan, and Darren did walk through this, but the proposed plan utilizes that same entry drive, that same main drive coming through. So, you would come through that exit-entry drive and then access the lower level of the parking structure at this location. And then, coming around this way, this is a gradual ramp up that meets standards. It's about 4%, so it's relatively gradual ramp up to the top of the facility and then entering the top of the drive or the top of the deck here. This area is set aside for emergency access. We did not want to have, there's a lot of activity in Carolina Vista Drive and the drop-off area, and we wanted to try and keep as many cars out of that area as possible. So, we did not have a connection coming from the drop-off loop into the deck. That is simply there for emergency access vehicles. And the idea is to have some type of a courtyard there, have large stairs and a large open area at that end of the deck because that deck is buried. There's about a 12-foot cut that would occur from the area at the top on the north end of the deck to the bottom end of the deck. So, it actually, if you're looking at this end of the deck, right now, there's a gradual grade change that goes up toward the croquet lawns, and that lower level of the deck would be flat. So, it would essentially be cutting in, we'd be cutting that deck into the side of the area there. And getting it, the upper level of the deck is roughly at the same level as the croquet lawns now, if you're familiar with that. So, the top level of the deck would essentially come directly out onto the croquet lawns and come directly out to that level. So, now, where, if you're coming across Carolina Vista and you're walking out to the parking lot where you sort of walk across the area with the great murals and then you drop off pretty steeply, that would just be flat, and that would be flat all the way to the upper level of the deck. So, this area provides, this area, the nice stairwell, rather than having more of an institutional-type tower type look and covered area, providing a large open space at the end to get light into that lower level of the deck since really about half of the deck, really from about here around to this side, all of this would be covered and buried and underground. So, again, it's about a 12-foot cut that's happening there to build that deck into the side of the hill there. You can actually see it better from some of the images that we'll show with the perspective drawings. The original conditions, just to walk through these quickly, there was a maximum building height of 55 feet for a length of 50 feet. The setbacks were in place. There was a signage increase that was requested and permitted. There was a part of the program within the lodge that was reduced. Stormwater management has to be accommodated, has to accommodate the 25-year storm, typical as a 10-year storm event. In this case, Pinehurst Resort agreed to accommodate the 25-year storm event. Efforts to preserve two trees, which were located and identified. And then, number seven starts to get to the parking discussion, which was much of the original lodge discussion to begin with. There was an agreement to come forward prior to building, issuance of any building permits for the lodge. Right now, as Dick mentioned, the lodge is probably not going to be constructed. It's on hold. The lodge is on hold for now. So, since that hasn't come forward, we haven't come forward with that development agreement. Number eight was a condition that we're really here to discuss tonight, that the resort would provide 125 additional standard-sized spaces on the campus. And this goes back to the village preferring the leveled above-or-below-ground parking structure in front of the lodge versus additional surface parking. So, it goes back to the diagram we saw earlier. So, this was condition number eight. Condition nine was to provide 100 parking spaces at the greenhouse lot. Those spaces have been constructed and they are in place. And then, number 10 was to add an additional parking, up to 86 parking spaces around the hotel facility, and those have been constructed as well and are up and operational. So, those are underway, and there's also some additional parking that's being discussed with the resort right now behind the spa and off of Barrett Road. So, that's some additional parking above and beyond what was required by conditions nine and 10 of this application. And then, the last was a, providing and managing onsite temporary parking and internal overflow parking. And I know the resort has been working with the village staff since May, I believe, to come up with alternatives for that temporary parking and overflow. And then, our condition number 12, as Darren mentioned, is really looking to maintain just the uses that were permitted within the original lodge application. So, the locker room, the bar, the rooftop bar, and then up to 34 units of lodging. So, and then, that's what we're really asking for today. So, here are those existing uses that were approved, just spelled out. So, 34 guest rooms, 64,000-square-foot building, a locker room, a rooftop bar with 60 seats, which was defined in the application, and then a boardroom, which would have 30 seats. So, we're asking to maintain those as uses. We would maintain the setbacks that were required and agreed to in the other conditions for the lodge, and then a maximum building height of 55 feet in that limited area. Not sure that we necessarily need that, and the 50 feet is, the 50 feet is, would be satisfactory in this case. So, then, taking a look at some additional images, they've been developed a little further than the images that were submitted with the application. So, this is an image looking south in the, I guess it's the northeast corner of the deck and looking at the access coming off of the top and the staircase coming down, having a trellis feature. This is the entry drive that you see at the bottom of the screen. That's the entry drive that would go into the deck area. And you can see the openings and how it, the openings get smaller and smaller until it's fully under ground, once it gets about halfway down the edge of the deck. This is a view from that same corner, just more of a bird's-eye view. And looking down on to the top of the structure, and you can see planting areas, planting containers and things like that on top of the deck to break up the overall area. You can also see in this image how you would enter the lower level of the deck through the exit-entry drive and then the sidewalk connections that are coming back. You also get a sense in this image how you get to the upper level of the deck. So, if you go past the lower-level entrance and continue to the western side, the western parking lot, that ramps up and ramps up to the top and then comes around and gets up to grade and comes into the top level. And you can see, this starts to show how the upper level of the deck and the croquet lawns actually have, are at about the same level, so.
Do you want to point out in the images that were submitted, it was a little stark white on the top of the deck. That was not meant to represent anything other than cement, which I think this is a little better image of what the surface is planned to be. But it really was quite noticeably white on the ones that were submitted to you.
So, this is looking at the southeastern end of the deck. And this starts to show the area, the large open area and large staircase that goes down into the deck. Again, that's a lot about opening up light and opening up the deck on the lower level so it doesn't feel so dark there. So, there'll be a lot of natural light that gets into the lower level of this deck. This shows the plaza and the access, and then the trellis structure coming off of the deck and entering in. So, someone parking on the upper level of the deck would walk through the trellis area and then walk out directly at the level of the club and drop-off area and be able to walk directly into the club. You can also see in this image too, that western parking area that ramps up to the top level of the deck. You start to get a sense of what that looks like. So, it's a very gradual drive up. This is a view from Highway 5. And what you would roughly see, I think the image that was included in the previous document didn't have the trees on it so much. And this starts to really show the landscaping and the trees and what it would look like from Highway 5. So, the area, the white building in the back is just a representation of the clubhouse. So, how far back it actually is from here. This is another look at the gracious entrance and entry, trying to make it feel more garden-like, resort-like than parking structure. Trying to get rid of that feel and have it have a really great connection to the Pinehurst Resort. This is looking at, in the lower level, looking up at that area with the grand staircase coming up and that open end of the submerged or subterranean deck and what that space could look like in the landscaping and really making it more of a garden feature coming in and well landscaped rather than just a, you know, sort of a, you know, an enclosed parking structure like you see in most, like an airport or something like that. So, really making it feel more garden-like. And then, looking at overall parking and, again, maintaining the exact uses. And I think, as Darren mentioned, any modifications to that, if they were major changes to uses, would have to come back before, come back through another general concept plan. But the deck is a net gain of 123 parking spaces. And we know that doesn't get to the 125, but we can pick up two spaces pretty easily on the campus. It's about a 350-square-foot area, I think we can probably find 350 square feet somewhere on the campus to pick up those additional spaces. And then, looking at the other parking changes that the resort has made, they did commit to the 86 at the Carolina Hotel, the greenhouse parking of 100 spaces, and then the Barrett Road parking that they're working on now with the village would probably add, looks like about another 96 parking spaces. So, overall, the conditions eight, nine, and 10 of the approved hotel conditional district were 300 spaces, and this gets to over 400 spaces at least. So, there's a lot of parking that's been added by the resort and will be added as part of the parking structure. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have related to the proposal.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and, any questions from the board? Let's go ahead and start with Paul, am I right?
Thanks for the presentation, very informative. I guess, when you, obviously, the lodge is on hold. You know, hold could mean it may or may not happen, I guess. But when you looked at the space between how the lodge and the parking would look, I mean, what is the distance and then what are the impacts? I didn't see any renditions of a proposal, if that would be any impact. And I guess the other question is, if the criteria to have the additional parking spaces, I believe, was based upon the lodge, if the lodge is on hold, why would there be a need to pursue a parking garage? Is it capacity today or?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out the best way of approaching some of this. You have, is this, does Darren have the second?
Yeah, do you want to put up, pull up the second question?
We will, it is part of our plan tonight to show you the first part of your question, which is what some alternatives to the lodge are. And we're not saying, the lodge is on hold because we're not sure yet what the best solution is. Obviously, there was 42 million, 42 million reasons why we postponed it. And actually, it's 42 million and one because the other one was no one would guarantee it was gonna be open by the open. So, that's why it's on hold right now. We are working on other plans that we think are more consistent with what village staff and the residents would like to see, a less dense plan that would accomplish more or less the same thing. We're trying to protect the interest for no other reason than let's just say that the USGA wants the locker room and that's all we end up building. So, you know, we have to begin to protect some of these uses for the future. We committed to additional parking. The 125 does not correspond directly to the uses that were in the lodge itself. That represented additional parking over and above. We do anticipate that some point in the future, we will be adding a rooms component, the locker room component. So, it is just best because of construction issues to get that parking deck built today as soon as possible. Because, again, once the USGA is done, the only way we're gonna have to access that site for construction is through Carolina Vista. And I don't think anybody wants to see 400 dump trucks coming up Carolina Vista. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did, I appreciate that. And when you say protect future use, who are you protecting it from? Members of the club?
Oh, no, we just, right now, if you, and again, I may have Bob read this because I'm not the expert. But as I read the conditional zoning, right now, I have the right to build a lodge. I don't have necessarily the right to build a locker room by itself. I don't have the right to build a bar by itself, we'll say. I have a right to build a lodge. I'm simply protecting it against, if I decide to go down a different route other than a lodge, I want to be able to present those same uses in a different way. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I word that fairly? Okay.
Your other question, and we'll address that in a second too with the site plan about where the lodge would be and where the parking deck is located. We actually, if you look at the plan you see above, if you remember the lodge plan, as you came up Carolina Vista, right at this location, there was a drop-off loop right here. And then, the lodge itself was roughly along this croquet lawn. And then, this parking was actually shifted back to about this, this access or this area where those islands are. So, it was shifted back there. When we designed, where we're designing the site plan for the parking structure, we held that line to make sure that we didn't encroach, if the lodge were to be constructed down the road, that we wouldn't have an issue with constructing the lodge and having the parking structure there. So, we made sure that we held that line. And you see, this is the sidewalk that comes directly out of the parking structure. So, you would have that exact, exact same location in the sidewalk. So, there's plenty of room here for the lodge or some other feature.
I guess, since you brought it up about the, you know, the access point, so, if the parking garage goes in before the lodge, how are you gonna access and have laid down for construction of the lodge?
Well-
I would say that most likely-
Okay, that was just a rhetorical question.
That part of the lodge would have to be redesigned, there's just no doubt about it.
Okay, so you just have to look at a different access way, whether it comes across the gradle or something?
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, the lodge access, you know, coming into the lodge may be a drop-off point at the upper level, coming directly out of the parking structure or something like that, rather than dropping off on Carolina Vista. So, there may be, there'd be some changes to that.
I don't want you to build the boat in your basement and then not be able to get that thing out.
Right.
That's all of the questions, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Sonia?
I'm a bit concerned about approving this parking deck and not knowing whether the lodge is going there and then having to get some more special use permits. Seems like we give a lot of special uses to the resort. Seems like we give a lot of special uses to the resort. I understand that you want to make money, but there are those of us who live here who would like to enjoy Pinehurst as the village and not just golf. I have a problem with the water situation. I am a member of the club. The other day when we had the rain, or anytime we have rain, there's no one at the members' club to help people get in and out, to park their car, but they are definitely there for the guest entrance. I got flooded under the canopy. The water was this high going into the front door of the club, members' club door. I mean, my shoes flooded off. I think before we approve any of this, we need to know what the water situation is. The underpass was underwater again, too. When you're going to disturb all this land, you're going to get more water. So I would like to see a storm plan before we approve any of this. I know you added parking at the hotel and it was kind of upsetting to see all the trees you took down to put those extra spaces along the walkway into the village. I don't want to see this happening over and over with the resort. I think Mr. Tuft and Mr. Omsdor probably turning in their grave scene, their landscaping just being destroyed. And I did not particularly care for this sentence about we can do whatever, since the lodge was approved. I, I'm just a little concerned that we're bending over too much for the resort. Thank you.
Sonia. Philip?
My question's very simple. What's your plan for lighting at night, underneath and above? I think I saw on top of some of the pillars, there were some.
Yeah, there, there would be lighting on top of the parking structure. And it would all be directed down and done as, as minimally as possible. Great thing with LED lights today, you can really direct those exactly where you want them to go. So lighting is, over the past 10 years, has really improved. So with all the dark skies requirements and those things, so, so you don't have any light spill up or off the property. So that would be the plan. There would be lighting below the deck, but there would be some lighting just for safety. It would probably be very similar to what the lighting is at the resort today in the parking lot there.
Bob, I have the same question. So when we saw the picture, does that dictate or is that a good example of where the lighting may be and what it may look like today or what it's built?
Dave, do you want to answer?
Any sort of wall lighting along the outside, anywhere along the structure that's exposed Okay, how about underneath, about the, the lower level? Okay. Obviously, but can, can you give us a little bit of understanding about the lighting plan there?
Jeremy? If we can bring him into the podium.
Yeah. Oh, and I'm sorry, please. Just get you a microphone. It's my fault.
Handing microphone, too, if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
There you are. I think the question was respect to the lighting at the lower level. That will be color matched to the lighting at the upper level and we're generally thinking it's not the real blue kind of LED lighting. It'll be a warmer light level as well. You generally will not see the lighting sources from the exterior of the deck. That's going to be a goal. It'll just be a gentle spill to meet the code requirements down below.
The same color, no wall lighting along the outside perimeter, obviously you have to have some path lighting.
Correct. Shielded fixtures as well.
Some shielded path lighting. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Anything else, Philip?
Yeah, in regards to the stormwater. So the, the neighborhood meeting, it was asked, would you mind just giving us a high-level overview of what the plan would be?
Sure. You know, based on the amount of impervious surface that's there today, the parking deck actually increases the impervious surface by minutia. And it, it really does. It, it was, there's hardly any additional surface. Stormwater, right on that plan, right where you see 102 on that plan and the, the little piece there, that has been set aside and designated as the stormwater management location. When we were working with village council to address some of the stormwater issues on the property and also at the railroad trellis, our trestle, not, not the trellis, but the trestle bridge, they asked us to accommodate a 25-year storm instead of a 10-year storm. And we've agreed to do that. So that will really help address any kind of stormwater issues related to the, on the property. That would all be an underground facility, so it wouldn't be any type of, type of above-ground pond or anything like that. It would all be contained underground. And then those stormwater pipes, they would, there are some stormwater pipes now that go across Highway five and this would be taken across Highway five and, and go out to the natural drainage system. So that's how stormwater will be addressed. But again, we're, we're maintaining the 25-year storm as opposed to the 10, which is the requirement.
Go ahead. Jack?
Yeah, thank you very much for the new illustrations. They're considerably better than the originals and it gives you a really interesting view of it and I think it's, it's attractive. However, I will comment that I'm a little disappointed that it doesn't mimic the, the iconic clubhouse a little more. So whatever features can be added to that to tie it in a little better with the, with the clubhouse would be, would be appreciated, I think. With regard to the comment by Paul about land-locking the potential log construction site, I think that was interesting. I suspect though that the, the resort could figure out a way to come in from the south, probably all the way from Morganton Road and access the site. So I think it's, it's a concern, but I, I don't think it's an overwhelming concern.
Can I respond to that?
Pardon me?
Can I respond to that? Based on the plans we've seen from the railroad, there'll be no access from Morganton Road.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you'll figure something out then. The, I do have a bunch of comments or questions. I think they're more related to helping everyone understand the use, how it's used, and maybe potentially make some minor modifications to the design. These are just observations of mine. They aren't meant to be criticisms, okay? They're just observations, having used the facility quite often in the last 60 years. So the, one thing I did note though, I'd like to, some explanation, the old lodge application from last year specified 364 parking spaces in the main lot. This application states 381. Why is it different?
Good question.
I, I will tell you, from the original one, it changed dramatically based on the amount of blocks out on the.
Yeah, I think that might have been.
Northwest side and.
Was that the original application, Jack?
The application from last year for the lodge had a parking calculation and it listed 364 spots in the main facility.
From the time it left P&amp;Z to the time it was through its three meetings at village council, that number did change.
Well, you may have missed a few.
Right.
It, it changed on basically.
Of course, I know that we, we pretended that there was no parking in the current site being developed for the USGA, which is a different issue. Anyway, let's go back to some other things I have here. The water runoff is going to be handled on the south side underground, I assume. This will imply that the upper parking deck will have slopes and scuppers that will direct the water to that facility. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The, the handicap spaces that are shown are all on the upper deck, at least there may be some on the lower, I'm not sure. How would someone that needs access be able to access the club from the lower deck? They would have to go out all the way to the end and then come back up if, if they were unable to find a handicap spot on the upper deck?
Yeah, we actually have, there are handicap spaces located on the lower deck at the access point, at the, the stair tower at the other end of the deck, at the northeast corner. There are some handicap spaces there. Those handicapped spaces come out at grade and are flush and tie to the sidewalk that goes directly over to the members' club. So we were placing those on that end for handicap ADA parking for the, for the members' club. That would be closer access to the members' club.
Okay, I just point that out.
Yep.
So here's a question. How would someone know where to park and where spaces are available? Should they go in the lower deck, the upper deck? Are there going to be indicator lights full or how many spaces are available? And the reason I say that, when I go up to Duke, Duke Hospital, they have a parking facility that's interesting. They indicate on every level all the spaces available and in fact, the spaces have small lights over them, green and/or red if they're occupied or not. And so before you turn into a, a deck, for example, you know immediately how many spaces at least are in theory available. So I, I, that may be something to consider in the future. It's a technology that clearly is available now, so. Now having, here's, I had this question also. What cart access will there be to the upper decks or in or allowed on the upper deck or lower deck? Because all upper deck traffic must go through that access road twice. In other words, wants to come in and wants to go out. And when people come to the club, they drop off their clubs, they drive to the parking lot, and then maybe one of the members, if there's more than one person in the car, drives the cart over to the car. And so I'm wondering how that's going to work. It sounds like you got a lot of cart traffic coming in and out that access road and it's on the, on the west side, cart traffic, car traffic and so forth. I just, I just wonder how that process is going to work. It really should be thought out a little bit. I'm not giving you the answer here, by the way, okay? But I just, I just point out that when you took a, look at the process and the logistics of carts and bags and how they're loaded and unloaded and so forth, it requires a considerable amount of thinking and particularly if you have parking garages that are maybe not as obvious where your car is, okay? I noted that the size of the parking stalls is different on the lower parking current access road in the upper deck. In other words, according to the PDO and, and it's laid out that way, there's nine, nine-foot wide stalls and there's 18 feet of stripe.
Right.
By the way, the current parking lot, the lower parking lot, both parking lots have 20-foot stripes. So currently, there's, there's about 64 feet between the whole thing, between the stall and the space and the next stall. Whereas in your drawing, the, the lower busy road access to the upper deck has only 60 feet of space. And the upper decks unfortunately has 62 feet for some reason or another. It's just something to look at because I do know that there's a lot of Ford pickups in that lot. And they happen to be 21 feet long, okay? So you might want to rethink your measurements a little bit because with a hitch, believe me, it's, it's a bit of a struggle sometimes. I also have a question. Who would use the cart parking near the railroad tracks? Is there a better use for that space? I'm not sure who would be using that cart space near the railroad tracks, which obviously the way it's designed, it kind of squeezes it down, so full-size parking is probably not going to be practical in that spot. But I just wonder, who would use that and is there a, a better design there or a better place for those carts?
Those are actually part of the original lodge design, so in, in utilizing.
I'm not giving you the answer here. I'm just raising a question.
I appreciate it. I'm glad you're not expecting one either.
I also question, the lower access road really serves a lot of purposes. Currently, I mean, it'll serve the, the upper deck, you know, access to possibly the lodge someday, who knows? It seems like that's, that lower access road with its parking on it should be really thought through very carefully in, in the initial design because it's a very, can be used for a lot of things. And if the lodge gets built, it'll be used for delivery and/or dumpster pickup and who knows what type of contractor serving the lodge. That's my major comments at this time.
Hey, Jack.
Thank you for the presentation. It's exciting to see, I guess, a route for adjustment when, you know, your initial plan may not come to fruition the way you thought it might. I don't really have any questions, just comments. I, I think it's exciting to see a private landowner kind of utilize their own land to work on a project that is addressing a public need overall. Parking gets brought up a lot of the time. It's a, it's a part of the discussion whenever development and growth is in front of us. So personally, I feel like this improves the, the situation that is in place currently and preserving the potential uses for the existing conditional hotel conditional district, I think allows even a higher and better use to be made of the, the croquet courts where they are. So I, I think building a structure like this, it'll, it'll update the possibilities for the area. It does, I think, allow the, the possibility to address some of the stormwater runoff concerns. You know, I'm not exactly concerned with or, you know, feel that this is the, the place to address or, you know, whether it's even the, the club's responsibility to, you know, fix things for, for members or whoever else is a visitor at the club, that's a, an issue that's, that's taken up elsewhere. Our purpose is here to sort of review the site plan as a whole, consider the, the changes on the, I guess, the, the zone as a whole and, you know, recommend if it's in line with the, the current goals that are in place, then, you know, we recommend a, a path forward or, you know, any, any further conditions for that development. But overall, I, I think the, the details that I'm seeing are pretty pleasant. And again, I, I think it improves a situation that, that needs to, needs to be worked on. So, thank you.
David? Jules?
I'll, I'll second a lot of what I'm hearing there. And when I, I'll tell you, when I first went to open up these plans, my thought was parking structure on Route 5. And I was getting ready to kind of hold my nose and look at this. And I think what you presented was not only unobtrusive, but really rather elegant in a lot of ways. So I was, I was pleasantly surprised to see what you were putting forward. I know that this is just a conceptual view at this point and we're not getting into code issues, but two of the questions that came to me, one code-related, was the handicapped issue. And looking at that grand staircase, it's beautiful, there are no railings. I pictured my mother falling down it. I wondered if there were near the stairs, any kind of handicap lifts, if there was something going on to help people move through the structure. You know, even if it's not per se using handicap parking, we have a lot of folks in this community who aren't necessarily dealing with handicap passes but are mobility-challenged and anything that you can do, you know, just makes life smoother. And then the other thought I had was the cart traffic and that our golfers are really used to having the ability to get up to their cars, get stuff in, get stuff out, particularly if the bag drop is busy, you know, having, having somebody get a cart down there. And once again, it'll just create a more, a more pleasant environment for your clientele, although that is not really what we're solving today. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Jules. Matt?
Thank you as well for your presentation. I have a few, a couple of questions clarifying. One, and it's been mentioned, the storm drainage plan, so that's clarified a little bit. I guess that was one of the things in the conceptual site plan requirements I didn't see explicitly on the pages we received. But when you say under, underground structure, I'm thinking kind of what we have at the community center. So would that be underneath the deck itself? Is that, is that the plan?
No, it would actually be right where number, the 102 is, right here. It would all be underground in that location. So all, all the water from this area flows this way and there's essentially giffs around. So this parking structure and deck, there'd be pipes that would be installed to get the water from the parking structure to that location for underground storage and infiltration.
Okay.
Underground storage is great because it allows for water to infiltrate as well, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, you mentioned the 102 earlier. I just missed that that was where it was going to be, so. Makes sense. The, the right-of-way for the railroad, it's not shown on, the railroad is shown obviously on your plan, but the right-of-way is not shown. I'm assuming that we're clear. I'm assuming that we're clear of the railroad right-of-way?
We are.
What, what is the railroad right-of-way in there? Is it 200 feet?
It's actually on our other plan.
It varies.
But I, I'm not sure what. It varies through that area, right? The width, it goes in and out.
Something to, I guess, verify. It looks like, from what I could tell, scaling it on the plan, the closest point on the structure was about 150 feet from the center of the railroad. So unless it was a 300-foot, which would be the biggest I've ever seen.
Matt, we've been working with, they've been working with the railroad just to get some easements and encroachments for sewer lines and things like that, so.
I noticed, actually, I noticed that on your updated conceptual pictures, the retaining wall, which was actually a part of the lodge package, I believe, correct? I didn't, I mean, I mean, it may be on these plans, but I didn't see it called out. But you do show the brick retaining wall kind of on the lower southern side of the site. So that's, that is a, I mean, that's shown there and necessary for this build-out. Is that correct?
It is because of the way the, the ramp parking lot comes up the hill. There's, there's a need to have some parking structure or some, some retaining wall there to hold those parking spaces up to get to that upper level. It's not a, it's actually a lower wall than I thought it was going to be, so.
Yeah.
So, and there's, there's plenty of hillside and landscaping that will be there on that side.
That obviously is closer to the railroad as well, so that, kind of same question So as was mentioned about the facade, I mean, when I first saw the images, I appreciate the attention to detail on these and, and how they paint a picture. But I, in, in thinking about the clubhouse and the, in the PDO, there's this statement under the parking structure, paragraph in section eight, that says, if concealing the structure is not feasible due to lot size, then the building wall or walls facing the public street shall be designed so as to resemble a building in active use with elements such as window indentions, brick patterns, and articulated surfaces. So can you speak to, I guess, what, I mean, I love brick. I think it looks nice, but just how that does meet what's around there, or does it?
Sure, absolutely.
What it's designed to match?
Yeah, parking structures are obviously a very space-efficient way of accommodating the demand, but they can come off as heavy infrastructure, for sure. We've been mindful of that. Nobody wants a piece of imposing infrastructure in this location. So we've done everything we can to try to make it a non-building, to really seamlessly knit it into the landscape. So the first way we did that was with the grating, sort of tucking it into the hill and allowing the upper level to flow over the top. We think that makes a big difference. We also pulled some retaining walls off of the edges of the garage so that landscape can spill over and be planted in between to soften those edges. The brick, we really think, receives and gives it the opportunity to feel more like a garden wall, kind of a landscape structure, rather than, we're trying to make it a non-building as much as we can, and we think that's the way to defer to the existing clubhouse versus it kind of becoming a parking deck cartoon of the clubhouse. We're really trying to make it knit it into the landscape. We, we have dubbed it the terrace because it's not really a parking, it is accommodating parking structure, but we really want to make it a landscape element with the pergolas and trellises and corners that are carved back that engage the landscape. So the idea is thinking of it more a part of the land than being a building that really is trying to express itself.
Is the Members Club, I just, excuse me for not remembering. I mean, is it a brick structure? How much brick is there in that area now?
So there's a fair amount of brick paving, and so the idea is that we are just extending the brick paving. This is really part of the ground plane, and we're, exactly.
Yeah.
Back one picture, by the way, which is.
I don't know. We'll see. That one?
I guess this will, I, I think earlier there was a question on handicap. And if we look at the, just below that trellis right there, that is at grade, and there is a way, a very flat sidewalk that comes out from under there that is usable handicap. And then in case you haven't noticed, we have also adjusted all of the pathways on this side of the picture to allow a ramp before they were full-nose, and so you had to step up or go on the, on the driveway. We have now changed those, so the sidewalks now have ramps coming up so they can go all the way through.
And then if someone were going to the Members Club, they would prefer to be at that lower-level handicaps because they could go directly across.
Right.
Okay. Whereas the upper ones are more for the main clubhouse.
Correct.
Right. So I guess just to extend that question to us, and as our, as is mentioned by Jack, and I think Lisa mentioned in her notes, but do we, while I understand, that's helpful with the brick explanation, do we feel like that is, you know, meeting that, that statement and, and what, what that facade should look like or how it should fit in the environment? Or is that something we want to talk about?
Can I ask you to read it again, Matt?
Sure. If concealing the structure is not feasible due to lot size, required or needed deck size, topography, or other conditions as determined by the village planner, then the building wall or walls facing the public street shall be designed so as to resemble a building in active use with elements such as window indentations, brick patterns, and articulated surfaces.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing from the applicant is they made every attempt to meet the first part of that phrase, that first part of, if not feasible, you know, they're, they're saying it is feasible. They have made it an element of the landscape rather than.
Well, it does, it does stick up.
I'm not saying you have to agree with them.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Well, much of this will be discussed during any review with the HPC on the actual structure, I would assume.
That's right. Yep. I also just, I'd like to make a comment. I'm not aware of any ISORS that the resort is responsible for. I think they have their own brand to live up to, so I think there's a certain level of, of trust that they're not going to, you know, just add a gray box to their own property that would deduct from the experience of, of, you know, going over there. So, yeah, I think a, a certain level of, of trust in what other products we see locally is, is warranted.
Hey, Bob. Can we get an idea of the overall wall height that would be facing Highway 5 there or any of the three sides?
Sure. So, let's see. That's a better image.
Where do you want to get me? This one?
Yeah, that one. That's the one. Yeah. So you see the, where the cars are in the front and looking up at that wall? That wall is, at its peak, is about 10 feet high, I believe, is the, the max height on that wall. And then it slopes with grade as it goes down. So the, the high point of that wall is about 10 feet in height.
Roughly 10 foot, below 11 foot to be safe.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
So I think a lot of our job, of course, you know, Matt, thanks for bringing that up, is to make sure that we are in line with the PDO. And so that becomes a definition thought for us, you know, so.
And that wall is a retaining wall for the parking lot. It's not necessarily part of the structure itself. That, that wall is specific. It's, it's detached from the parking structure. So you have that wall, and then you have 60-plus feet to the parking structure in the plan. So let me back up to the plan. Do you?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good point. It's a, the, the way it's worded is it's related to as it faces the, to the right-of-way or public road. So obviously, it's, it's what you can see from 5. In this picture, you're, it, it looks pretty obscured, the parking deck, so it is harder to see.
Yeah, exactly. The actual parking structure in this location is really underground from this view. And then, of course, the area near the croquet lawns is completely underground. So if you're, you're thinking about it, and what you're going to see from Highway 5, you'll actually see very little of the parking structure. You'll see the retaining wall that's there to hold up the parking lot, but you won't see the, the structure itself. That structure is back behind 60-plus feet.
Is that the tallest point? Is that the tallest wall?
That's the, that's the tallest point. That's, that's the tallest retaining wall. The parking deck structure, I think, is, is it 14?
It's 14 feet floor to floor.
14 feet maybe on the entrance side, I would probably guess.
Right.
But I, one, one thing we recognize with that retaining wall is it's interesting. Right now, that view looks all the way through all the surface parking, and there's kind of the sea of cars there. And by introducing that wall, it really shields not only the deck, but all the surface parking that currently exists there. So I think it quiets down that view pretty dramatically.
Make sure that we're not maybe crossing or fuzzing up definitions. Give me the, give me the explanation of why that would be a retaining wall versus the wall of the, the structure itself.
It, it's a freestanding wall on, on its own, just like any type of retaining wall that you would see. It's not part of the deck structure at all. It's, it's a retaining wall, independent retaining wall. I'm trying to think of an example.
Doesn't sit on footers and doesn't support the structure.
I'm sorry?
Doesn't sit on footers and doesn't support the structure. I mean, it sits on footers, but.
It, it doesn't support the structure. It simply supports the, the wall and, you know, the parking there. It's not a, it's not a, yeah, it's not part of the actual deck structure. It's a separate retaining wall. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Let me jump in.
Okay, two more, just two more quick questions. On the walk-up from the lower elevation, and this is just for clarity, it, it looked like it was a different walk-up in width from what was in the elevations. Can you flip back to the, that view with the stairs?
Right.
Yeah, so that, I don't know how that changes. I'm assuming the width of the deck is the same, but this, in, in the ones we received, there's a wall at the eastern or left-hand side of that staircase.
Actually, the stairs shifted. So in this plan, in, in this plan, you see the stairs going up the middle with landscaping on both sides. In the previous plan, those steps were, were over against the retaining wall that you see there. So, or the, the wall, the deck, the wall, the deck.
I got you.
We felt, I think, Jay, this just feels much more open and just is a much better feel coming up more open. And there'll, there'll be handrails here.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense.
If I walk to the top of the stairs and look out, I'm looking at Highway 5. Is that correct?
If you go to the top of the stairs and look out, you're looking at the cradle. You're looking across the croquet lawns toward the cradle.
Without the lodge there.
That's right.
Got it. Thanks.
And then my only other question is in, in, sir, in your initial opening and talking about kind of the caveats, as you called them. One is this construction start date and the other being, you know, enforcing prior conditions that were applied for the, the lodge rezoning. Obviously, those conditions will stand, so I, I think, I'm, I'm trying to, was trying to figure out what you were, I guess, trying to protect against in there, because it, it sounds like what you're saying is whatever goes in the lodge location is going to be at least at that level or lower intensity. So this, this deck is, covers that. So when I read those caveats in the condition in this, I, it feels redundant because I think, to me, it kind of goes without saying, but maybe it has to be said, Darren. It has to be said. Okay. So then it, then it is said. And then in the first, just so in the first caveat, obviously, construction date, you know, that, that's, that's beyond us, so that makes sense, but, you know, we, we can't put any yes, you know, that kind of agree to that.
I just want to make sure Darren and team have all the time they need to review when they get to file plans, because that, you know, that does take a while.
That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you guys for your presentation. I just got a couple of questions myself, if you don't mind. If we can discuss the overall current grade of the park, parking lot today and what it's going to be after construction for the lower level? We're not talking as it's going to go down any further, right? Or will there be any decrease in grade?
Darren, if you actually go to the first slide, or the site plan slide, or actually, yeah, go to the site plan slide, I think we can see it there. Yep.
Well, my real question is, do you have an idea of how much of that grade will be taken out currently?
I think it's about 12 feet.
Oh, that much?
Yeah. It's, it goes down quite a bit in there. It's going to go down 10 to 12 feet. And essentially, right now, that, the parking lot goes up quite a bit, and it goes up toward the croquet lawns.
The topography from one end to the other end is 12 foot.
Yeah, so right now, it's sort of like this. And what we're going to be doing is making it flat across that lower level, the deck is flat across. So that's all going to be cut down there. It, it's, it's deceiving how much it actually goes up when you're out there.
It is, yeah.
But it, it goes up a lot. The contours are actually on that plan. You can't really see them, but, but from one end to the other, it's, it's a significant amount of grade. But that lower level will come in at the level of the entry drive, and it will just stay flat the whole way across, and then it will go up 14 feet on the top side.
So that's, and that's a good example of how we're able to get so much of the parking structure underground.
That's right. That's, that's how it's, it's going down in the ground.
One of the concerns that came up really was airflow, heat, circulation of the lower level. From an architectural standpoint or a planning standpoint, what kind of consideration is given to that?
Sure. Well, technically, from a code standpoint, we're going to be complying with open parking structure requirements, so there's going to be enough open perimeter to allow natural airflow through the structure. We also, rather than keeping the grade tight to the edge of the structure, those retaining walls, particularly on the Carolina Vista side, will hold off the parking structure to allow for more openness and actually landscape along the lower level. I don't know if we've got any views that show that, but.
So right here, you can't go up to it, but there's a retaining wall on the backside of the storm, and it's supposed to be even larger.
There's a retaining wall on the backside of this landscape that allows even more openness rather than the ground just flowing up to the sides of kind of tapered openings in the structure. These openings stay relatively consistent in height, and the retaining wall here kind of rises up the hill, and the landscape will trail over again to soften things. But that'll make it feel even more open, allow more light and more air circulation down below. That's been a big driver of the design so far, and that's an added element and an added expense in order to make the structure more open.
Thank you for that. So one of the comments that were made during one of the council meetings last year, Dick, was that you may see some parking for some of our larger vehicles. You may see the trolley parking, as well as, I think you noted, three large vehicles that don't fit in a, a regular-sized parking space. Is there any sort of consideration for those large vehicles in this parking deck at all? Or will they even travel through this area?
Right now, they would not travel through that area. Now, most of the shuttles would not have to access this parking lot. They will be stored, or however you want to say it, at the greenhouse lot, which does have the oversized parking spaces included in it. And for the most part, they are just accessing the eclipse and going out. They normally do not go down that side. We deal, we still will have the sand area, which is between this parking deck and the railroad, where today you'll occasionally see the camper or oversized recreational vehicle parked.
So as well, last year, there was, part of the plan for that area was some upfitting and some increased parking for that as well. Is that still in the plans? Is that a change?
The sand area?
Sand area.
We do intend on stoning it, I guess, for lack of a better word, putting stone down on it, because right now, employees are parking there. We're having to wash our cars a lot more in the dry weather. But so we'll be stoning it, and again, that'll probably be the only thing. We still have to see what the railroad's final plan looks like for that particular siding, which they intend on adding as well. So we're going to have to see how that plays out.
So there's also a plan for an emergency vehicle entrance from that area. Is that still in play? Is it not going to be, or is it, is it going to be totally blocked off?
It, no, it, it would still be in play.
Okay.
It, it still would be in play. And, and that was originally intended, it would come down that parking lot area and then turn on the cart path that would go behind the lodge. That's still intended when we get to that point.
I think that leads me to, I guess, just one of my concerns is really safety, namely for, for golf carts. Also, safety when there are events. And I think namely, the July 4 celebration just recently, I think was a great example of that. You know, a, a, as it was ending, the parking lot was kind of a fiasco, and we understand, or I certainly understand, that's a one-time event type of thing. People were crossing, they were jumping the parking lot. There were, there were vehicles driving over, you know, areas where they were not supposed to. Golf carts were trying to mingle in with cars, and it was kind of a dangerous situation. I was one of those people. I, I was literally within inches almost from, from a couple of cars at, at times, trying to exit there. And I think it speaks a lot to really that one entrance and one exit into that parking area. And so now, we're going to put a lot more cars into that area, all as well, trying to exit that one proposed exit. So I'm just concerned about safety, really, when we mix in golf carts as well. And then whenever I think about that other emergency vehicle access, and then I also think about the access of the courtyard, those, I think, will very quickly, certainly when you guys have events, and it doesn't have to be as drastic as July 4th. I think just a, you know, your parking lot. Help me with some of that understanding. And also, was there anything to deter, or any sort of signage, or anything coming out of that courtyard area on that top level to to point vehicles in the direction of the traffic flow that you wish?
Yeah, I think, you know, wayfinding signage is something that will definitely be part of of this. And and directing people where to go will definitely be part of it. And I think the emergency vehicles, you know, in in a big event, based on the way the emergency vehicles are going to be accessing that courtyard space, you know, there there'll be bollards there to that keep, you know, the general traffic out. And I I could see it being utilized in an event or something like that. So.
A couple of things I'm going to point out. I was right there with you on July Fourth. Thank you. I was also there for the parade. So I know that occasionally, that got a little messy. One of the things that really made July Fourth a mess was the fact that a lot of our members are trained that there's another exit that existed prior to putting the big green fence up, which all of a sudden disappeared. And it was amazing. The number of people who had headed that way and then all of a sudden realized they couldn't get out and had to come back. Once the site is completed, I have to remind everybody, there will be an access from the lower parking lot to the USGA parking lot, which will further allow certain egress and ingress during peak times. We're not obviously going to use the USGA parking lot for the normal golf group, but we certainly could on those days like July Fourth and things like that. So that's actually going to provide you two points because you'll have access out onto Cherokee directly. It'll be right turn only. But then you'll also have another access to Carolina Vista as well.
That was one of my questions.
That will ease some of those times. So I think that this particular July Fourth was just a little bit worse than normal because of that. But yes, I experienced it as well, and I have a lot of notes. I think the other thing is, is we're going to have to change certain ways we do business, for lack of a better word. I I think it was Jack who asked the questions about how you're going to segregate uses and things like that. I mean, we're having means to say, members are going to probably want the lower level during the summer and the upper level during the winter because of temperature and keeping your how your car cool and things like that, which I fully understand. So we're going to have to work through some of these things about how both spaces get utilized and and how they are marked. And even, I think we're going to have to get a little better directional before you get onto that turn into the parking lot in terms of defining for large groups that your parking's on the upper level, and that's where you go. And reserving the lower level for members or vice versa, as the case may be. But that's something that's on us.
Well, you know, again, I deter back to our conversation a year ago, whenever trying to determine the parking need on your campus, it really is a, you know, a mixed use and a mixed parking need. And, you know, I think the consideration, of course, you know, from our standpoint, really is is PDO-related. But I think the overall concern really is the use of the parking lot. And we can think of the, you know, the traffic from the golf carts. We can think of the pedestrian walkways and what could happen during certain events. You know, when large corporations come and all of a sudden, the parking lot is is fuller than it is on normal on on regular days. So that also could impact that. And so that's just a concern that I want to make sure that I bring up here.
And and I will tell you, I would be very disappointed. My parking guy is not here today, but he has heard a lot from me on that main entrance. And right now, it is it is a relatively busy intersection. And, you know, we will be adding a sidewalk. We'll be doing a couple other things. But I agree with you. It's probably going to have to be wider to accommodate car traffic going back and forth. I thought I was going to add one other thing, but I lost it. Sorry.
So one of the concerns I've got is really the thought process of the the parking deck and the correlation between the lodge and the USGA seems to be almost inverse to what it was this time last year. We needed the parking deck because we're going to build the lodge. And now we're building the parking deck, which I I I think, to your benefit, could serve some other uses. And I think that might be what's, I think some of us feel that that could be what's driving the need for the parking deck really urgently. And it makes us concerned really about what's going to happen with that lodge site. And I think that's a concern overall.
We will get to that here in about two seconds.
Okay, no, please.
Right. But I will, I will throw out one thing, though, because I've heard this a lot.
Yeah.
In fairness, I mean, I think we've been good neighbors. I I know occasionally we get meet up, and that's fine. But I think we've been good neighbors. And I will remind everybody that a year ago, you all approved a lodge without new parking. The parking was going to come later. That was a pretty monumental, you know, confirmation that you trusted the resort. It wasn't a big leap for us to reverse that once the lodge was postponed. And again, I want to stress, postpone's the word we would use right now. We had the time. Ownership was key on going ahead if we were going to postpone the lodge, trying to see, and he really doubted we could, moving forward with the parking deck first and kind of reversing that. You guys were great to us to approve it the way you did. To us, it's not a big leap to have reversed that once the lodge was was postponed and and moved forward with the parking first.
Well, and I think that, I think it is very fair to say that you you guys are certainly good neighbors. And I think through that process last year, a year ago, I think with us, starting with our meeting, we were a little bit adverse to really maybe considering the PDO and the and all of the parking uses. We we necessarily didn't want to. And I and I think you might have started to do that through some of those meetings with council. Can you help me a little bit about what your, what what the resort has done currently to consider, you know, the the PDO, some of the calculations of need that you guys have done as far as parking and what you do need over the last year, or specifically maybe those meetings then?
Yeah, I know, I I believe, and and this is going back a year or so, might be a little cloudy, but there was a demand study that was completed by a parking consultant. And I I think based on that demand study, it it came out that I believe the lodge needed, I think it was 73 parking spaces, 70, I think it was 70, it was 70-something, I think it was 73. And then during the process with the with the council, the resort agreed to take that number to 125, just to accommodate some of the overflow and some of the other things that were part of of what was necessary. So I I think that's where the 125 number came from. So there was, it was the parking demand for the lodge plus, and that parking demand for the lodge ended up working out pretty close to what we could determine would have been required by the PDO. The numbers were were about the same, based on what what we had come up with and when we looked at the individual uses. And because it is such a mixed-use campus, it's a bit of a strange animal. So, you know, we we got to that point, and and I think that's where we ended up. And I think it was about 52 extra spaces that we, that the resort agreed to to construct on the campus, the main campus, to address some of those issues. And the USGA will be building 100 spaces. So they're building more than they need as well. So I think that by the time it's all done, there'll be a lot of spaces out there. So.
And if you remember last year, I think a lot of my concern then, I know we don't remember last year, but a lot of my specific concern was there were just not a lot of cor, not a lot of thought and not a lot of maybe definition, making sure that we're hitting what really the village requirements and the PDO were. And I think that you guys have have done that. So thank you. I mean, I think you've made some steps to maybe make sure that that you're considering that in your decisions. So I really appreciate that as I was watching the vehicles. You know, really, the last comment that I have is really the landscaping use of the structure. Thank you. I think it's very, very well designed. You know, anything further that you could do to make it more of a landscape structure? And I know you've done a lot already with the trellises and and the landscaping along the sides and 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 such, but maybe any any other park-style features, any other, you know, islands in the middle? You know, I think that would make not only our citizens of the area more receptive to this, because everybody's afraid of a parking deck, right? But I also think it would make the overall look just increase. So that's just a comment. And thank you. Thanks. Very well designed. So that's it. Any other questions?
I have one more follow. Follow on to Jeremy's comments. That'd be the last one to second-guess a council decision, but I'm surprised that you haven't gone back and reevaluated surface parking, you know, rather than build the structure. Anyway, that's just a comment. My second.
Make sure that's in record because, yeah.
My second comment, and it's really a question, is has there been a complete analysis and study of all the parking requirements based upon all the uses that occur on this campus? I I know of no such document or analysis that's been done. And and the reason that's important is because we've endlessly talked about parking, along with traffic and the traffic circle, in Pinehurst. And it seems like it would behoove and be useful to both the resort and the village to have a, an analysis done that clearly defines the requirements and an understanding of what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And the reason I ask that is just looking at the campus site, I look at it and I see 10 tennis courts, a fitness center, two pools, a restaurant and a bar at the pool, a conference room, two meeting rooms, each can contain, I don't know, 200, 300 people, the Laddie's Court Restaurant and outside seating, Payne's Pub Bar, the resort staff offices, both the membership and lower-level offices and the executive offices, a Deuce Restaurant and Bar, a pro shop retail establishment, a 19th hole bar, a Donald Ross Meeting Room, along with the old ballroom, a training center, five 18-hole golf courses and a nine-hole course. According to the PDO, that would be 576 spaces by itself. And now contractors who are regularly there, caddies and so forth, the pro staff and the part-timers, starters, rangers, et cetera, and and a hotel. So I'm thinking, maybe it's time for us to do a thorough analysis of this campus, come to an agreement as to what the reasonable parking is. I think it will discover that there's considerable opportunity for shared parking. I mean, are the restaurants serving at the same time people are playing golf? That may depend upon the the time of year and so forth. But I think a professional study of that nature that's submitted to the village and agreed to by the village will go a long way towards stopping this endless conversation about parking. We seem to be doing a whack-a-mole and a shell game half the time, trying to figure out what's the right parking. At least we'd have some baseline. So I I think that is absolutely necessary before we go a lot further. That's an opinion.
I think that topic came up last year as well, and that's kind of what I was alluding to in my comments. Do you have anything to speak to to that or anything? Willingness to do so?
No, I mean, I think it's part of when we get in, when we got into the in-depth council discussions on that, I think we did flesh out more. And there was more, some more tables that were discussed regarding, you know, those uses and breaking them out from a PDO and a, and a, and actually, PDO stand, from a PDO standpoint.
I believe we put together a full matrix of all the uses within the resort and the PDO standards as part of the the council presentation, which ultimately, I think, led to the 125 additional spaces. So that was part of that decision to to take care of the overflow plus, you know, make make some gesture toward accommodating the lodge plus having some additional space. So.
And if you look at, if you look at, like, the swimming pool that just came in, they parked specifically for that. They had a crate parking for that, PDO-related parking for the swimming pool. So as they've been, and it's harder for us to address the existing use that was out there. It was all developed pre-PDO. But since the PDO's come on, all of the uses that they've been developing out there are requiring that the the required amount of parking spaces.
However, wouldn't it be settle some questions between the resort? And it'd be good for their long-term planning also, as well as the village, to have an understanding and an agreement as to what what parking for this campus is is appropriate going forward?
Sure. But you've raised, you've raised a couple of questions. You can look at what the PDO requires, which is just a.
That's a starting point.
Which is just a starting point. And then there's how it's actually used. There's the peak times, there's the shared using, shared uses, there's the internal capture, there's the golf cart, there's the golf carts that use it. So it's, it's, it would be an in-depth, it would be a complicated one, sure. Could it could it be done? Would it would it help all concerned to get rid, to address some of these, some of these issues? Yeah.
But how can we go forward with this endless parking discussion about what's appropriate, what's enough, what's not enough, where it should be, without some type of baseline analysis that's agreed to and verifiable? I don't understand why we're doing this.
Because we park based on, based on the required, they're required to provide the parking for the additional uses on the site. So at a minimum, from a PDO standpoint, when it comes in for, when they came in for the pool, they had a park for, they had to find spaces for the pool. When they're coming in for the lodge, we went through this long discussion, where are you going to provide those spaces? On the tennis courts? They can knock those out, or they can now come up with this proposal. So I can tell you from from a staff level perspective, not to get into that study, and I I think you're right, but when something comes in from a use standpoint, if they meet the PDO-required use, and that we're not wavering that, that's what we're looking at at the ti, at that point in time. But I agree. I mean, we need to look at a more in-depth study.
Well, I think the concern, I'm sorry, I was going to say, I think the concern really is, you know, we should make sure that we uphold and implement the the PDO. So that is our concern. Their concern, obviously, is customer service standpoint. Do they have enough parking overall? And I think common sense obviously says there is a lot of mixed uses and and sharing of parking spaces. But I do agree, and and we're going back a year, but I do agree that some sort of structured overall analysis, kind of an agreement, because we all can understand that it can be a little bit different than what the PDO requires in this case, that would provide a little bit of a structure between Pinehurst and Pinehurst. And and so that was going to be my question for you. Do you even know of such an analysis that could take place? I mean, any, give some input on that, Matt, would you?
My thought in response to to Jack's comment is, at this point, we're operating based on requirements from village council last year, which did put on, above and above what we set. So we're at least, there isn't, there is a number, there is a standard, and that's at least being met here, maybe save two spaces. But but yeah, I'm sure a comprehensive study could be done, a traffic study. It's not my background, but I'm sure there's somebody who knows how to do it.
We may just, a comprehensive study may decide that the parking deck isn't necessary. Or it may say it should be a three-level deck. Who knows? I mean, that's the trouble. We're kind of shooting in the dark here all the time.
If I can comment?
Please.
Sure.
One, you're right. We're bound by adhering to the conditional zoning right now, and that's what I think we're here to address. And although I'd very much like to think that having some sort of analysis would solve all the problems, I will simply tell you, it will shift the analysis or the issues to something else, which is the shared use or the other calculations that are allowed by code, because it's not 504 spaces required because that's reduced by carts and by membership. So the membership factor reduces it by half, if I understand. But so, I mean, now you're entering to all these other questions, which people will begin to question whether that's the right idea or not. Is that ballroom being used by the same people who are golfing? Or is it be, you're going to enter into a period of time where all you're doing is chasing your tail relative to coming up with a solution that everybody can agree to. And even if we come up with a solution everybody agrees to, it doesn't necessarily mean the resort is going to put a three-tiered parking deck on that site.
At this point, you get.
I'm reluctant to throw up my hands and say it's impossible. Let me put it that way.
It would be extremely difficult, yes. I, that's my point. And getting everybody to agree to it is going to be what is probably.
Oh, no question about that. I don't argue that.
Because the other thing with parking is, it's not just whether parking's available. It's kind of like a tee time. It's not whether a tee time's available, it's whether your tee time was available and whether the parking space you wanted that was in this particular location was available.
Downtown, we know this all the time.
Mr. Gabor.
Right.
But wouldn't it be in the best interest of everybody involved and our citizens of our village if there was a third party who gave some definition to that?
I agree.
Again, I I I will say that maybe, but could we come to agreement on the assumptions that would have to be used? Because are are we going to take peak assumption and assume that every room is occupied by somebody who's not golfing? Well, the resort's not going to accept that. That isn't a realistic thing. Are we going to assume 50% are used by the golfers who are there? Are we going to assume 25%? Or?
Yeah.
The assumption is reasonable minds from the village and the resort can come to a, an agreement that at least gives us a benchmark to go forward.
Let me ask you, who helps you with your figures to make sure Who helps you with your figures to make sure you have enough parking spaces on your campus? Kimberly Horn. And do they have anything, any sort of information that they have given you relative to your com, the comprehensive campus at all that leads you-
Comprehensive campus mean this campus or-
Yes. This one in specific, this one, just this one.
Last year, they did the study with Darren and crew and calculated. Again, that was a year ago, so don't hold me to the numbers, but yes, that was done. I'm sure we can revisit. Unfortunately, they're not here today, so I can't, they'd be the ones to better answer that question.
Well, and then we'll have to make the decision as well as whether we need that information to make, you know, a recommendation to council. But I do recall, my, also my regulation, it's not the best either a year ago, but I do recall something to that nature as well. Is that information still available to you?
Yeah, we still have that, that data that they put together.
Okay, alright.
That all led to the 125 additional spaces.
Right, yeah, I remember there was some sort of directional thought that came to that 125. What other points you got or direction?
I have nothing to add to that.
I'm sure we'll get into that during the conversation.
I think they've got more they want to show us.
Yeah, there's one other.
It may open up another can of worms. I don't know if you want to proceed or not.
That's where we're, yeah, that's where I'm a little concerned. That's what we're writing notes about here.
Well, what kind of, what kind of can of worms would it open? Help me understand it.
Going back to, I think, the questions on what other thoughts are on the side of not the lodge.
Sure, okay.
An alternative plan to the lodge?
Yes, sir. Alright, what else? Questions, thoughts?
They're not obligated to show us, is that correct, Darren? That's not part of this application, is that correct?
What, what you're-
What the potential view of the future might be.
Well, this does play into the staff concern that was raised.
I think it's up to the applicant as to what she would-
That was listed on, on the staff recommendations.
Okay.
And let me get back to the whole parking study thing. And one of the, one of the first things that, when I've worked with other parking consultants and they're out there, first thing that they look at and they'll do is they'll do an inventory study. And they'll do that inventory study over a course of several months at different times, peak times, things like that, to look at and analyze what is the surplus amount of spots that are available at any one time in any of these locations. That's going to give you your best indication of how, the reality of how that site is being used. So going forward, that'd be something that, you know, I would recommend that you do just to have so everybody has an understanding, because there's a perception out there that there's, that there's, it's absolutely terrible to park there at all, at all the times. And it's not, and it's not the case. There are peak times, there's no doubt. When Circle K was just in town, for a tournament, it was tough to get a parking spot. That was because everybody drives separately. When everybody drives separately, that creates a demand. We don't even, you know, the codes don't, our codes, especially with the PDO, don't anticipate everybody, every single person driving separately to a site. So if you have a bar, you know, we, our ratio is one to three seats. But if everybody drives separately, they generally don't have enough parking. So there are going to be those bits and times when you have those, when you have those increased spots where you, where you need it. It's like parking for after, after Thanksgiving for Black Friday. That old paradigm of parking is not accurate anymore, because that's why we created these huge, huge surfaces of asphalt within, around these malls and such. But that's just my experience.
I think one of the concerns is multiplied by not knowing, in reality, about the lodge today. If there was a condition that came away from this board that included an inventory study of your parking, would you be any sort of agreeable to that?
Depends on what the stipulation was and what it meant.
Well, I mean, I think we can discuss that.
Because-
During this point.
It's going to take a while, I mean, that will be something that would take a while.
Take months, and that's not going to be done before we need to start constructions. I mean, going by what Darren just said, if you're sitting there looking at existing uses over a series of months before we get approval.
But we could ask that one be done within a certain amount of timeframe that's well beyond the timeframe of the parking structure.
Here's the problem. You've got construction projects going on right now that are going to, you have to have a site that's fully operational. So they don't have a site, they, the USGA project going on right now.
Yeah, we understand that. I would assume that the resort has a history of uses over the past year at a minimum. What events occurred, on what days, in what ballrooms, how many people attended, how many tee times were used on any particular day? Just basic information, looking back a year to be able to calibrate what the use and parking requirements were. I'm just suggesting that it may be possible.
I will point out that Sedexo was our last big group, and for those who might remember Sedexo, there's some other reasons why it's been coming up lately. But one of the reasons was the big buses were going through, shuttling people. So again, our courses would have been all full, doesn't necessarily mean parking was full, because we were running buses, big buses, not our buses, the large Greyhound buses or however you define them, to and from parking locations.
And that could be factored in, I would hope.
And again, all I'm saying is, you can begin this process, I'm just saying that eventually we're going to find it's a rabbit hole, that we're going to be just debating other factors, not parking.
So the way, the way I look at this, last year, when all the approvals for the lodge were going on, it was determined that they were going to have to create 125 parking spots, right? Now the lodge is on hold, so the intensity of the, the use on that part of land is already down by that virtue. And we're still getting the 125 spots. I think, big picture, again, you're, you're meeting the goals, you're meeting the, satisfying every, every factor that was put out originally. I just, I think so many of the other things that we're trying to figure out right now aren't, are they relevant? Yes, because you're, you're trying to get parking numbers and we're talking about a parking structure. But are they going to solve the issue? It's, it's either this, this happens or it doesn't happen. If that study happens, it's not going to solve the issue that's in front of us. You're just further, I think, delaying a use or delaying a development that could, you know, prove beneficial, just for figures that, you know, we're going to have them, but what are they going to change?
It also creates an unenforceable catch-22, given the timeline that is before us. Because if we say, well, this is contingent on you all doing a comprehensive parking study with the village, and they go ahead and pull the trigger on building the parking garage, and guess what? Eight months from now, they don't do the study. What are we going to do? Come demolish their parking garage? I don't think so. So, I mean, there, there has to be good faith for that to go forward. And if there's good faith for that to go forward, I don't see why it needs to be contingent upon this particular approval. And it makes sense to have that happen more in concert with council and the applicant rather than this board. But those are my thoughts.
I think, if you would have disconnected and just say, hey, I need more parking, the way I'm going to resolve more parking is this parking garage. This is, it was originally contingent upon the lodge, but now it is not, we're looking ahead in the future. I think that's where a lot of people may be hung up. I know I was. I'm like, okay, you need 125 spots, but you're not going to build a lodge. Why would you put the garage there before you have a lodge? I mean, it just doesn't make sense to do the, do the work at the same time. You know, that way you tear it up. But, you know, if the needs to have an additional parking location for the growth of the club to meet all the activities that Jack outlined, then it should stand alone. You know, and then you should, it should not, you know, bring with it the baggage of, hey, we needed this for the lodge. It's just, I need parking. You know, I think it would have been easier to digest that way than, you know, whether the lodge is going to be built or not built. You know, I think that's where everyone's mind is. We're thinking about this lodge vice, you need a parking, more parking or not? You know, here's our recommendation. You know, so I don't know if presenting any additional future things of the lodge may help or hurt your case. Not my call, I don't know what those surprises are, but, you know, if we look at it that way, maybe that'll help us come to a quicker decision.
And again, I want to stress, we're presented this way because this is what conditional eight says. I mean, we're trying to comply with the conditional zoning that was given to us a year ago.
Yeah, that's contingent on building the lodge.
Right.
I think-
I hadn't said I'm not building the lodge yet.
Yeah. So let's, let's take a kind of a stopping point on the parking conversation, if you, we don't mind as a board. Let's go ahead and keep that to ourselves. Believe me, it's going to come back up when we kind of come into an internal conversation to hear. And we are going to go ahead and keep the, we're going to keep the public hearing open. So this kind of dialogue can continue and when we move into the next stage.
Can I throw out one other thing? I will also point out that in our discussions with village council that have occurred as allowed by law, in the way allowed by law. You know, and I think Darren will support as well, you know, we're out there with Barrett Road, which is a $1.5 million parking structure that's not outlined on any of these conditions. That is simply something we're trying to do to improve, and it's going to improve in a way that is going to help you on July 4th as well as me on July 4th. So again, I want to demonstrate that we're not hiding from the parking issue, we're trying to address it. I would agree with you, I don't want to get caught in the catch-22 where I'm doing a study that, that is not required by law or code and somehow creates more animosity on parking. So, there we go.
If you would, let us move on. Thank you for those last sort of comments, and then I'll, I'll say something about that as well. Any other further questions related to the applicant? Do we have outside of our, please go ahead. That's not parking related?
Yeah, it's not parking related.
For the time being? Okay.
And there, the USDA, we, we have to work with the, 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 having to get those trucks, the oil coming in, some of those, that's why, something, two different parts. When we had the USDA plans come in front of us, we put a stipulation in that the planning staff would work with them about the construction trucks coming in, the supplies, and there was a thing that I had mentioned that the railroads may help them get in supplies. I want to know how that's going to work with this structure. I think there needs to be a plan. I know on my street, I'm starting to see trucks coming back and forth, and it's not a public truck route, it has a sign up. And I hate to be out there with a stop sign and do the part that the club and the USDA is supposed to be taking care of. I mean, it's a neighborhood, it's not a thoroughfare. And I've seen the trucks come around that circle to the club and hit that curve all the way around, and I was going to the flower beds. So that needs to be addressed if we're going to agree with this parking.
Well, first of all, let me, let me address two things there. One is not all, not all of those trucks coming by are actually related to, to the USGA project. We actually had a pre-construction meeting, we got the route, we understand the route that they're taking for at least the first part of the, the project, which is they're doing a lot of grading, all that's coming in from 211 down 5 to the site, and that's the way it's supposed to go out. They're, they're going to deliver their rail by, they're going to deliver their rail by, rail, their, their steel by rail. So that's coming that way. And they have these meetings with all their subs, because we're putting, we're actually, I don't know if they're up yet, but we've put up construction, you know, the driveway, the wayfinding signs. So they should be adhering to that.
The bright red signs are up.
The bright red signs are up, showing, telling you where you shouldn't be. So, so we are, I mean, we've already got one complaint, reached out to it, found out it wasn't there, it wasn't anything related to USGA. So we can't police everything, but we know that we've had that meeting with the USGA folks, with their contractor. The contractor sits down with their subs and has that same discussion. So we have, we have had those discussions.
I will point out that currently the contractor of record for the deck will be Gilbane, which is the same contractor as the USGA is using, which will simply, again, ease coordination of deliveries and everything else. It will be a combined site, for lack of a better word.
So if we have a complaint and we see these, do we call you?
Right now, they call me frequently when they see trucks going the wrong route. So I'm quite familiar with, with, and so is my staff. And I think that if the mayor was here, he would tell you that generally they're happy with how we reacted, at least of the vehicles we control, which is our, you know, our delivery vehicles, with how they've reacted for the hotel.
One more thing about the road that comes in from the club where the egress and ingress for the parking garage. I've almost gotten hit several times there. Maybe you need to have a stop, not even a stop sign, but one of those that comes on and off for traffic. Because these people, I mean, just pull out and they don't realize you're coming up. So that's just-
Is, are coming out of the-
Right, exactly.
If you guys figure out a way to cure human nature and just, you know-
Well, it has nothing to do with human nature, it just has-
But that's, that's your personal event that, you know, is affecting your perception of this parking lot idea. And same with the trucks, those are things that are completely out of our control as a board and, and their control as landowners. They can do what they can, but those, those simply aren't the things that we're here to consider.
Yeah, I think it was addressed with the USDA, and they were very happy to address that, and we're very comfortable.
So for the, the sake of structure here, let's go ahead and keep that type of conversation till we, till we move to the next step. Any other feedback from that at all? If there's no feed, if there's no answer to that question and feedback further, then what we'll do is we'll move into the board deliberation. Point of, oh yeah, public comments, thank you for that. Can someone see if we have any public comments? Sorry to ask, thank you. Okay, is there anybody that would like to speak? Please, go ahead and come on up. Please announce your name and your address. And we are going to go ahead and give a three-minute-
Oh, it won't take that long. Klat Klinsky, 25, Queens Court.
Welcome, Klat.
I've been here for all the meetings and the discussion, and I want to say at some point, people have to make a decision. Last year, there was a different, there, there was a different culture going, and there was kind of arrogance on the part, oh, well, we'll just take up the tennis courts and put parking down there. And I think this solution is profoundly the best solution you could probably have. It seems, it's been, seems like a lot of thought. It's not that obtrusive, as like Jewel said, you know, where you just have this big parking structure. So I think really, they've, I normally wouldn't say this, but I think it seems like they've tried very hard to accommodate us. We don't want more asphalt on the tennis courts. So, you know, and to say that the parking was dependent on totally the lodge, no. Once the cradle came into existence, as a 30-year-old member, I noticed the increased need for parking. And there were a lot of public comments that people who use the club a lot didn't have enough parking with or without the lodge. So I think this is a very good solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to say, comment? Seeing none, now we'll move forward to the board deliberations. Are we prepared to keep moving, or does everybody need five minutes? Everybody's good, let's keep, let's keep moving. Yeah, it's good. We're going to keep the, the public hearing open so we can still have some dialogue back and forth with the applicant, if that's okay. But let's go ahead and, and begin. We'll switch it up, Matt.
Yep. So two thoughts. One, I'm, I'm in favor of the proposal with the condition 12 that's in the staff's report. But I think, Darren, I would say we need to change the acreage number to, I think 4.17 is what I calculated, but we're not rezoning the part that we already rezoned, so I feel like, am I accurate in saying that it should be the, the net and not the total?
Well, it's because it's, it's also starting to include, yeah, I mean, you could read it both ways.
Depends on, depends on where you put the comma.
Yeah, just don't, I mean, don't let that hang you up, because we can always, I can always get, work through that as it gets to council.
And then my other thought on the traffic study is just, I wouldn't tie it to this, to the deck if we want, I'm sorry, parking study. I wouldn't tie it to the deck if we wanted to request that it be done because of the expansiveness of the resort and the parking and how you can walk and golf cart in between. Possibly looking at tying it to whatever, and again, this, this wouldn't really come to us, because I don't think we're going to review whatever comes for the lodge spot, if I'm correct. Because now, I mean, unless for some reason there was some kind of qualifier needed on the use. review whatever comes for the lodge spot if I'm correct. Cause now, I mean, unless for some reason there was a, some kind of qualifier needed on the use. So it would be more a staff consideration. And even if it shows that it's less, it could still be beneficial, but that's the next development, right? That's at the point where more intent, or not in terms of agreed, but in terms of actual intensity is going to change. So at this point, as been said, we're okay with intensity. So I don't think we need to make it as a caveat on this.
Jules?
I concur with Matt.
Thank you, Jules. David?
Yeah, I agree with what, what Matt said. Um, I, I think the presentation has, you know, taken into consideration as much as they, you know, have, have been able to for the, you know, issues that are going to come up, the issues that have been considered in the past. Um, and yeah, I think with the, with the condition 12 that's, that's been recommended, um, I feel, feel comfortable with, with the proposal.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, I mean, I really liked the proposal a lot. I think the parking deck looks so well-designed. I think there's some process issues to work out in the future, but I'm sure they can do that. Uh, I think it's a good design. I think it's well-structured. It's a good location. I think in general, I would be very much approving the, um, the rezoning request with one concern. And in fact, that would probably, I would like to see a condition added that a comprehensive use, parking use and requirement study be accomplished within a reasonable timeframe. And it doesn't have to be tied to this approval, but I think it should be submitted to the village and a negotiation as to an agreement as to what the actual parking requirements are for this campus. Like I said, it doesn't necessarily have to be tied with approval of this, um, rezoning, but it should be specified that it is required and, um, it'd be required to be completed within a certain timeframe. I think that's necessary if we're ever going to go forward in our life and stop talking about parking at this location. I think we need to do that. And now's the time to attach it as a condition. That would be my opinion.
Bill? I don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said. Sonia?
I agree with Jack.
Anything else? All right, Paul?
Yeah. You know, again, not to sound repetitive, but you know, again, disconnect this from the lodge. If there's a requirement for parking, I think this is an adequate solution. I hope that, uh, the end product, assuming it gets approved, gets funded, you know, looks similar, similar to the rendition and the grades, uh, those are, you know, pretty smart way to look at it. Um, you guys need to put Jack on your team. He had a lot of good ideas. Um, so I, I don't know what his hourly rate is or not, but, um, again, I don't know if we need to put those into conditions, but hopefully you guys can look in it, look at those because it made a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack probably has a daily rate, not an hourly rate.
It's kind of expensive. Yeah. All right. So board members, I'll point out that, so we need to consider if we are in a position, we can make a recommendation to council tonight. We can vote to continue the hearing if we feel that we need more, um, information. Um, we can, staff has provided us with a procedure and motion template. I will point out that as this is a rezoning, um, application, that we need to tie it to a consistency statement, which is a separate piece than the overall recommendation to council. So please take that into consideration when we're going to make that. That has to come before our overall, um, recommendation. So we can, um, either attach conditions, and that's why we're open today to discuss that with, uh, the applicant, um, or we can approve or we can deny. So.
Um, I'm just going to throw out there that whatever, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, whatever conditions we put forward need to be mutually agreeable with, with the applicant. Um, and I'll, you know, I, I'm not the village's attorney, but the attorney in me sits there going, this, this, this future parking study is a completely unenforceable thing. And it's, I mean, we, we can say it and we could request it and we can all agree on it if it's mutually agreeable to you, but the devil's always in the details. And, um, you know, it, it, I, I wonder if this is the right forum or if there's a better forum for that to happen, that it lives at the council level. I agree we need it. Um, you know, I absolutely agree we need it. Um, I, I just don't know if this is where it happens.
Well, the, the only point that I'll make on that, and then, um, is when, when we, when we discuss a conditional zoning, um, this is a point that where it could happen. And I think that when we start to weigh the, the, the pros and cons of the community and citizens versus what we're doing here, that's where it has to be, in my mind, equal or plus one in the citizen's favor. So that's the only point I'll make of, of that. Um, otherwise I, that's a good point. So anything else or anybody working on a motion?
Are we still in public? Don't we have to close that before we can?
Oh yeah, we have to, okay.
So. But I will make a comment now that everybody's had a chance to speak. Uncharacteristic, uncharacteristically quiet tonight. Um, I think when you strip away everything, there's a parking problem. I am not a member of the club. I'm sorry. But when I do go over there, there's a parking issue. When you strip everything away, they are solving a problem. They're solving a problem based on what the village council has recommended by way of parking structure. Um, I don't think it gets any more simpler than that at this point. So that's my opinion.
So is, if I work on a motion, are we ready to move forward in that capacity?
Well, do we need to decide about Jack's, uh, other condition if we?
I would prefer that.
Can we put a date on that? Is that enforceable and does the applicant?
Well, we would have to put kind of a date on it if you wanted to go that way and then, um, ask the applicant, I think, if it's something that it would be mutually agreeable to them.
Jack, what's your input?
I mean, I can contemplate a professional study considering all the uses on the campus and starting, probably starting with the PDO requirements and probably as a baseline and then negotiating from there for shared uses or are they, are they realistic based on experience? Um, and I can see if it, if it's professionally done, I think with, with real data, it could be accomplished, I would think, and submitted to the village, um, within six months.
Do you have in your mindset the structure of such a?
Oh no, I have an outline document, if that's what you mean. But, uh, but I just, it just seems like going forward, we, we really, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, we endlessly talk about parking and we're going to talk in the future about parking at this campus once again at some future date. And maybe it's time to get a baseline that we agree to.
I, I will, six months feels aggressive to me, uh, in part with the staffing shortages that exist at the village. And Darren can speak to that better than I can, but it would be, as I understand it, a collaborative process. So Darren's going to need the folks to collaborate as, as much as the applicant would.
Is there a certificate of occupancy related to this structure eventually? Darren?
Yeah, there will be.
There would be?
There would be.
Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy?
I think that timeline is.
No, we're just talking within ourselves on, you know, potential timing.
I will tell you that that particular statement made it perfectly clear that the applicant would not accept such a condition.
There you go. I understand.
Hey. I would like to think in some part though, if you're going to spend $10 million for a parking garage, you've already pulled out your fingers and counted how many spaces.
Oh, true, we are a business and we do try and, believe me, I park there every day, every day. And I'm aware of when traffic, when parking is better than some. And normally, since I'm one of the first ones there, I can tell you when it's going to get bad despite what I see first thing in the morning. Um, but I want to stress, even when it sometimes seems bad, there are 40 to 50 to 60 spaces in places that maybe people don't want to park in, but they still say traffic is, is bad. We're a business. We're going to do everything we can to take care of our members, take care of our guests. We're not trying to drive people away. At the same token, I will tell you that no one's coming here because our parking's better than Key or no one's coming here because our parking's better than Sea Island. Um, so, I mean, that is a business consideration we do have to take in, we do have to keep in mind.
Mr. Higginbotham, just for, for my efforts to move our board along and for clarity of your statement there, um, you would not be agreeable to any sort of parking analysis to get approval for this?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so none?
That doesn't mean, I, I want to stress, that does not necessarily mean I'm against a parking study. I just not going to tie it to these, these particular conditions.
So you, there's no, you just would not agree? Okay. All right. So there's our answer. All right. So at this point in time, unless we have any more conversation with them, do you have any?
I'd say excluding this parking garage with the study. Is that what you said?
No, uh, no, I was talking about uses on the campus.
Right.
I really didn't, I didn't.
But you didn't want to tie it in with this one, right?
Well, I said, uh, independent of the approval.
Right, okay.
But a condition.
Do we have any further questions? I got it. So any other further questions for them or anything? Okay.
Well, I, so your, your hesitancy was not just on the term. So for instance, if we were to say within two years to complete a study of a 69-acre prop- property, is that palatable or?
Then what happens if they don't? What's the enforcement mechanism?
Well, you tie it to, to future approval. I mean, we, we have a unique property here that has multiple zonings on one property, not to mention zonings that have many uses beneath those zonings. So I, as Jack said, I think for their benefit and the village is, I mean, it's not like we have a, one building, one business that has a predictable use. We've, it, it's, it's complex. So I think it's got to take time, but I don't think that means it's not worth talking about how feasible is it? I, I don't know that it needs to be done before the open, but I think if, if we know this lodge piece is not going to be developed before then, then that could, again, I think that could be, it could be tied to that. And obviously village staff is going to have to review whatever comes in there, so.
The dilemma I see is that, uh, I believe this is study is necessary, a study like this is necessary. I obviously strongly believe that. Um, and this is the only leverage at this point in time we have. I mean, the council could pass a resolution asking the resort to do it, but they have no power to actually ask to enforce that and, and make the resort do a study or, or even participate in a study. So this is one of the few opportunities that is a conditional zoning that has quote "conditions" that gives the village the ability to actually impose a condition with some force. That's why I think we should take the opportunity to do it.
I think you always should take into mind as well.
I know that most people disagree with me, but I'm happy to continue that position.
So by, my question is, is, is a different time period more palatable?
No, at this point in time, I would say we would just not accept the condition. Because again, now you're tying it to the uses and maybe the uses wouldn't be if we didn't, couldn't come to agreement on what parking was allowed. That would be problematic for us as well.
Well, just point out and then we'll move forward as, as well as, as when they request conditions, like they're doing with number 12. It's a, it's a similar situation, like we're requesting conditions, you know, they've denied that. So let's go ahead and.
Well, I understand Mr. Higginbotham's position and I understand completely where you're coming from. And if I were in your shoes, I'd probably say the same thing, but I'm not, so.
Well, um, i- i- if there's nothing else, let's go ahead and get a motion to close the public hearing and re-enter into our regular meeting.
Move to close our public hearing and re-enter our regular meeting?
Motion made by David Almazora and seconded by Matt Jones. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we have exited the public hearing. Thank you very much for your.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. So let's go ahead and begin. We can continue some deliberation, but let's start thinking about, um, the action that we would want to take tonight, if any. Um, and let's go ahead and begin that process, please. And I'll, and again, I'll point out that we have a procedures motions template in front of us, um, and as well as point out that we need a consistency statement with any sort of motion, um, to approve or deny.
Darren, are we, are we out of line with this traffic study idea?
Parking.
Parking, sorry, gosh.
I think from a future land use perspective, it's, it's needed for one additional, when you want to get a, if you want to get a handle on additional, if they want to do additional things on that site. For this particular land use question, you know, we're holding, we're holding them to a standard based on that current lodge, that, that current, the, the previous lodge, along with some buffer in there. So from that standpoint, I don't think it does anything to this particular application, but I do think it, I, I do think that there's value going into the future for invariably, they're going, they're going to come to us for, that's, there's going to be a requirement, there's going to be a need, this, this, Jack's right. The question's going to come up again. Whether you tie it to this or you make it clear that the future, that some future, at some future date, you're going to need to provide this as part of that process. I don't know how I would word that at this point. Like I said, I, I mean, they, we have a handle right now on what the square footages are out there. We know it there. We know what the demands are out there. We, we know what the PDO requirements are out there. We have that information. That's out there for the entire campus. You can look at it two ways too. Most of that campus doesn't require parking because it's all developed pre-code. So the golf courses would all develop pre-code. So we would be applying a standard, today's standard to that code. I'll, I'll always go back to what I previously said. Reality of the experience is going to be the best indicator of what's going on out there. So if you'd send somebody out there over a period of time and do an inventory over a period of time at these various points of days, that's going to give you your best indication of how, of how the parking situation is on that site. Now you can compare it to all those existing uses that are out there, so you have an understanding of it. But if you do a time study, inventory of those park, parking lots, that's going to give you your best indicator. And that was, it's not hugely complicated, but it's something that has to be done over a course of a longer period of time. It's not going to be done, and, and the other, the other issue that you have right now is you have USGA. You have to have a fully operating site at, at the time as well. So it'd be something that, that should be done in the future. But that's, that's sending somebody out, that's sending staff out and counting cars and then figuring out what the, what the, what the occupancy rate is.
That's helpful. I mean, I'm being, not being facetious. Uh, I mean, I think there could potentially be additional rezoning requests in the future on this property as large as it is and future count, future planning boards, whoever's on them will, will need to recall and it, but it may not fit for us to put that requirement on them. I mean, obviously they've said they don't agree to it, but I still have to have peace about it in my mind, so, uh, but I think that's, that's helpful.
I mean, I think there's a value and everybody's in on it. Jack says, and Jack's right. Keep talking about this every single time. Every single time we come in here, we make them apply the parking per the code, but it's all the other, you know, the previous, what's going on out there, always gets caught into it, so I.
Everything's analyzable.
Yeah.
Or figure-outable.
I mean, I'm inclined not to rush this and that's why I'm not rushing us through these conversations. I mean, this is an important, um, application, so what else?
That being said, I'm comfortable with the motion as written with the caveat about the acreage and condition 12 without a condition on the parking set, parking study.
Would you like to make a motion on the consistency statement?
I'd love to. I move the Planning and Zoning Board adopt the Statement of Consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Village of Piner's 2019 Comprehensive Long Range Plan as described in the staff report prepared by Alex Cameron dated June 30, 2022. Achieving goals in accordance with the comprehensive plan is considered reasonable and is in the best interest of the public.
Second. So we have a motion, um, on the com- on the consistency statement for the comprehensive plan by Matt Jones, and we'll give the second to David Almazora. Um, we're going to take a roll call vote on this and let's begin with Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye on the consistency statement?
Aye.
Agree.
Agree.
That's seven ayes, no nays. The consistency statement passes as read by Matt Jones. So let's go ahead and begin the next motion.
Wait, no, you may.
Yep. I move the Planning and Zoning Board recommend approval with conditions to the Pinhurst Village Council of the conditional rezoning of approximately 4.17 acres of parcel ID 00025800 from RD to HCD. The conditions would be number 12 as listed in the staff report. Shall I read that?
The condition?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Previously approved uses and conditions will be maintained within the general building envelope. Design standards will be maintained for the structure within the building envelope indicated. Any modification to the structure will be required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Village of Pinhurst Historic Preservation Commission. Modifications to the overall open space may not be reduced by more than 15%. Impervious surface may not be increased by more than 15%. Any increase in impervious surface will be managed per condition number five.
All previous 12, 11. Joking.
I'm going to ask a clarifying question. Is that permissible under Robert's rules?
permissible as?
To make sure that I understand the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Does that, does that condition 12 include the stipulation that any future use cannot have any greater density?
It speaks to intensity.
Intensity.
Yes, well, it doesn't need to be in there because the PDO addresses it.
Okay.
The PDO addresses it.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Matt.
Second.
We have a second by Philip Schumacher. Another roll call vote and let's continue to begin on the left side with Matt.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Based on my previous concern, I'm going to have to vote no.
Aye.
Like Jack?
Aye.
Aye as well? Okay, for clarity? Okay. All right, so that is aye is five, no is two. The motion passes. Thank you all. Anything else on that subject? Hearing none, let's move on. In the agenda item, please. Thank you to the applicants, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate you guys coming in, thank you for the time. Thank you.
Got it, fine.
All right.
Let's go ahead and move on to the next, next agenda item, which is general business. We're going to need to discuss availability and schedule for future...
Oh, they all have it? Oh, nice.
Darren?
Do I have it? Oh, there, thank you. Get your calendar out to make sure we get this covered.
You got your mic on, Darren?
No, there's no hot mic stuff going on. Good point. All right, so we want to talk to you a little bit tonight about, we want to get fairly aggressive now, as you know, the Village Place Plan got passed by council. Now we want to move on to really the meat and potatoes of this effort, which is where the implementation's going to occur, and that's, I don't know where that all came from. That is where we have to develop and approve the form-based code. So what I've, what I've developed is a schedule of future upcoming meetings with a minimum of five. I know, I know it will get more, but what I'd like to do is see if we can't meet every other week for next, you know, eternity. The moratorium is also, the moratorium is also running up, so I want to, I want to get a good amount of this form-based code done and get things in motion so we can start, you know, getting these things adopted. In order to do that, we have to have, we have to go through the form-based code. And what I've laid out is kind of an agenda of how I see these meetings happening, you know, for, and you can see, meeting one, regulating plan review, base district zoning review. We know we're going to have to make some adjustments. PDO tax amendment discussions. So I want to cover that, talk about the information needed and what the goals are for each of these meetings. So, you know, we go from regulating plan to architectural standards, and that is a big section to talk about. Site design, and then a lesser, you know, four and five with signage design and landscape and street design, those are, I think those are less intense topics. It's these top three that I think it's going to take us one to two meetings apiece to get through. And I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to meet every other week, starting in two weeks, if we can, if I can, and we don't need every single one. If we can get a quorum, I understand people go on vacations, people work and all that kind of stuff, but if I, if we could get on a regular schedule, then we could all start, then we could meet and start hammering all these things out. And you'll get all the material ahead of the meetings. You're not going to get, I'm not going to hit you at the meeting, so you're going to have enough time to look at all these items and then we can start going through this and hammering through this and getting this form-based code done, so we can...
Now, is this only for Village Place?
Village Place and Pinhurst South are, they're going, they're looks fairly similar from a, from a, the architectural standards. They're going to be fairly the same because we were trying to get that character. What will be a little bit different would be the lot standards and some of the setbacks because there'll be a little bit bigger lots down there.
Haven't seen the council review and approval of the Smaria Plan for Village South just yet.
I know, but that's coming, but we can still start working on the Village Place Plan. If we, once we get through the Village, most of this Village Place Plan, most of that stuff is going to be able to transpose over to Pinhurst South.
So the focus is going to be on Village Place in the beginning?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And really where you see a lot of differences, especially between the two, is that regulating plan. That regulating plan is going to be significantly different for both areas. So that's what we're going to spend some time working on because that is kind of like the, it's kind of like the zoning map, establish some of the uses, active building fronts, things like that, heights in the area. So that we're going to set, and from that, architectural standards, lot lifts, things like that, come out of that. So this is the plan. Can I get a commitment?
Aye.
It's going to be a lot of, and I apologize, it's going to be a lot of work.
We can start and, and start earlier, too. If people are free early, we can start at three, we can start at whatever time you want, but I'd like to run these at no more than two hours.
Your day of the week, you're thinking, or what's your cadence?
I, I'm thinking, I'm, if Thursdays are open for most of you, we could, we could run it Thursdays. We have an HBC thing that we might have to, we might have to meet over and, and, we might have to find an alternative location, but we'll check and make sure that we can use this room most of the time, right, Shannon? If we, if we pick Thursdays, does Thursdays look like they would work for most of you most of the time?
I'm on two other boards that meet Thursdays.
Okay.
So I...
Not you?
Well, I can be here when I'm not there.
Okay.
Well, I think that's okay because I'm not, you know, just go ahead and point out, I will not be able to make every meeting, so I think...
You'll all have the materials and we're treating this like a work session, so we're not taking action on anything. It's leading up to the ultimate action of we, of us adopting the codes, but this is, we're doing the hard work to get there.
Well, and I think, you know, we've already discussed, I think one of my just requests for this is one to be, you know, some sort of consistency so we can put it on our calendars. Also would be to have, I don't know whether it's a form or just in an email, but I'd like to make sure that if we're not able to attend as a board member, that we have an opportunity and a path to give our thoughts.
Yes, agreed.
So I don't, whatever structure you could put in place for that. So if I'm missing a meeting, but I want to make sure that I have something said during that meeting, then we can make sure we turn them in and then I don't know if we could read them during the meeting or...
Get it to us, we'll get it to you, too.
Can we attend virtually? I mean, if I'm physically here, I will be here, but, you know, gone 180 days a year, there's some days I'm not going to make it.
Let me, that's a great question.
And I've got September through November, 71 days gone straight, so...
We're not taking any action.
I'll be, I'll be home around Thanksgiving and Christmas, though.
I'm hoping that we're done by that time. All right, so Thursdays, generally, okay? How about, how about time? Three o'clock, four o'clock? You want to skip four o'clock, three o'clock? I know, Philip, you work, I know, someone must all have...
I think four o'clock will be fine.
Four o'clock will be fine.
But she said some of us do have another board or something on Thursday, so we just kind of rotate around.
So a lot of the rotation would be...
Question Thursday is a planned meeting anyway. I mean, that's July or August, August 4th. I mean, if you go two, two weeks from today is 21st and then the, the next Thursday is August 4th, which is this planned P&amp;Z meeting anyway.
So we could have it on that, we could either do it before or after.
Add another hour on to it or something.
Maybe if we don't have a lot on the P&amp;Z meeting, we could do some of that, too.
Yep. Yeah, we'll keep that, we'll always reserve the regular scheduled meeting, so...
I think a lot of flexibility is going to be needed, but I think some of the, some of the requests was to, hey, can we just provide a structure right now for the board as an expectation standpoint?
Every Thursday, every other Thursday at four, starting whatever is the next...
And as many people that can show will show, is that correct?
We'll have to have a lot of communication.
Is there a minimum required for a working session?
I got a, that's another note.
Right.
Shannon?
Next.
You can do that. Shannon's excellent with that. Let me, let me check on that as well, because it's, we're not taking any action.
I didn't hear the answer. Was there, is there a minimum, do you think, Shannon?
I got to, I got to...
I'll look it up.
I'm going to clarify that.
Okay.
I got to review that because we're not, we're not officially, we're not going to be taking any actions. It's purely a work session, but statute things run in my way every once in a while. Okay.
Do you recall, I, I don't even want to say this, do you recall when we were meeting before as a work session, there were people who were concerned that they were not open to the public and advertised?
I think that's been resolved.
Has that been dealt with?
Open to the public and it is, there are, there are some marginal meeting minutes that are maintained, but they don't necessarily rise to the meeting minutes we have here.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so there, you know, folks can come on in.
Sure.
It's available and it's on folks to call and figure out what's going on.
We don't entertain any public input at those meetings.
No, we don't.
Now, can we use the council meeting or does it have to be here or, I mean, the conference room?
We'll be looking at... Yeah, we can have virtual. Yeah, let me look into that. We still have to notice. So let me, we're still, I got to look at something else, but yes, it looks like you could attend virtually, so...
But having a consistent schedule of every other Thursday would help with whatever notice requirements are needed.
Well, I think between, and tomorrow, Shannon, it's going to do a deep dive and making sure which room we can use at what time. Hopefully, it's over here mostly. HBC is going to throw us off, we know that, but every other time should work.
Council conference room is fine. In fact, it's even better for a work session in some ways.
It is, I just got to make sure, I just got to make sure it's not reserved on some of those dates, so I got to give them reserved. So once, once we figure, once we figure that out, we'll send a general email out, hopefully tomorrow, and then I'll start putting together all this information to get it to you next week. Okay?
Great, thank you.
And get ready.
Great. Anything else on that subject? All right, so anything else from general business? I would like just go ahead and make the comment. Hopefully, we all saw the email from Shannon where the UNC Board of Government is going to forego their fall workshop, and I think it's, it's a couple of years now since they've had one, I believe. You know, I attended one early on and there's a lot of, there's a lot of value in that. So I hate that they're not having it. When they do have the next one, maybe we ride share to one, I'm more than happy to have rider. So, but in the meantime, just a reminder for the, for the UNC Board of, the UNC modules, learning modules that are out, let's continue those as well as any other, you know, PDO, just readings and self-learning. So just making a point for that. So if there's no other points, no other general business, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move to adjourn the regular meeting at 6:45 PM.
Second.